It being 6:30.
Recording in progress.
Call this meeting of the Manchester by the Sea Select Board to order. Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Ah, yes.
John says yes. This meeting is being recorded. Um, thank you. I'm trying to avoid open meeting block complaints. The first item on our agenda, as always, is public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the room who has a public comment on a non-agenda item? Is there anyone? The chairman's report is a commendation to the fire department, who, which had 12 members go to help Middleton during the fires in October and November, starting with Lieutenant Chief, Jake Haley, Captain Robert Harvard Havender, Lieutenant Jonathan Happel, Lieutenant Timothy Crosby, firefighter Eric Junker, I'm sorry, I'm ruining anybody's name, firefighter William Kenyon, firefighter Shane Stevenson, firefighter Michael Going, firefighter Philip C. Taylor, firefighter Richard Curran, firefighter Sarah King, firefighter Joseph Sanfilippo. The mutual aid between the fire departments on the North Shore is critical to the safety of all of us, and I would like everyone to give a hand to the firefighters who live. I would also like to mention that in this past week, our police and fire/ambulance dealt with one of the most serious crimes I have heard of in Manchester in many, many years. And they broke up a kidnapping. Everyone was safe afterward. It was a spousal kidnapping and a small child was retrieved. And so, all of you who were involved in sorting out that unfortunate incident, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Why don't we go ahead, postpone the action items until we have done this signing in? We're in capable.
Again, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. It's a momentous occasion in an officer's career. I think I've said this before. So tonight, we're here to swear an Officer Kevin David as our newest full-time police officer. Even though these ceremonies are short, but like I said, they're important in an officer's career and recognizes the officer as he starts his career for the town. So since May of 2021, Officer David has served the town as a reserve police officer, and he comes very highly recommended from other agencies. Officer David is a graduate of Triton Regional High School in 2016. Currently holds a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice with a minor in psychology from Westfield State University. And he comes to us as a fully certified police officer through the post commission, which was recently established in 2020, and through the municipal police training council's Bridge Academy. So at this time, I'd like to ask Christine Dixon, new town clerk, to come up, and Kevin's Officer David to come up in the center for the official oath of office.
I, Kevin David, do solemnly swear.
I, Kevin David, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a police officer for the town of Manchester by the Sea.
As a police officer of the town of Manchester by the Sea.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
In accordance with the bylaws.
In accordance with the bylaws.
Of the town of Manchester by the Sea.
Of the town of Manchester by the Sea.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Kevin's mom to come up and do the official ceremony penning of the police officers' badge. Thanks to the select board for allowing this to take a few minutes. It'll be a regular meeting for this ceremony penning. And that concludes the show.
Thank you very much. Thank you. A moment or two. Is there anything? The action items are a list of things that we have agreed to discuss at some time in the future. You can start each meeting by going over the address to make sure that we are touching on the things that we've agreed to and that add things that we think we need to talk about in the future. Are there any comments on the, again, on the action items?
Well, I think we talked about at a future meeting, we have a deadline around the short-term or rental policy. Remember, if we establish a firm date by when we wanted to revisit that. I know we established a little task force or we started to.
We started to, and the planning board thought that they should handle it.
Oh, they're going to handle it? Okay. So we don't have any action on that at this time?
Just to keep track.
Keeping track, yeah.
Okay. So we may want to put it on the action items, just because if we're.
Yeah, we can do an update first of February.
That sounds great.
Second meeting in February, maybe.
Okay.
Give them a chance to.
And then the only other thing is, I wasn't sure where the water ban stood, if we need to revisit that, give it all up, precipitation.
Yeah, the state hasn't lifted the critical designation yet.
Okay, so we're still.
Maybe another week or so, they might.
On Washington Park. Water in the water. Any others? Okay. In that case.
Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
Yeah. I move the select board open the public tree here.
Second.
Discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Anne says yes?
John, yes.
A public tree hearing for three trees is, yes. Yes. We have representatives in the, from the Friends of Trees and our town tree warden and.
Can we leave it be addressed in the part extension?
Tom?
Sure. We're starting with the three pine trees.
Why don't we start with the three pine trees?
Okay. Yeah, I, my understanding is this is on the town piece of land right away where utilities, I've looked at the trees. They're probably third or fourth growth white pine trees, 50 to 75 years of age, growing normally is the way they do in a natural woodland setting, even though they're very close to the edge of the road. And it's very difficult with white pines to tell their overall health. Most of the growth is at the top, what we refer to as a lion's tail. That's normal for the way they grew. Excuse me, I have a little, I don't have anything, just a little normal dryness and nasally that I get coming from. Anyway, hard to tell what's going on inside these trees. There could be a lot of things, issues with them. I see many broken off branches. It could be copper rancid. My major concern, normally those trees, if they do break, they don't fall over, the tops come out of them, et cetera. But my concern would be the cutting of the roots immediately adjacent to their trunks where they want to trench a utility conduit and bring it. And that would really set the trees back and bring about their demise. And if it has to be done, I wouldn't feel comfortable with big trees like that near my house. I don't know the sentiment. I did talk to the man who owns, who is doing the development. I'll run in there, but I didn't talk, get a chance to talk to the neighbors. But anyway, yeah, that's my, pretty much my feeling on the trees, in natural woodland trees, white pine trees. Very hard for me to really evaluate the condition because it's so high up, any of the damage to them.
Thank you. We have a very long agenda tonight. So I am going to ask, when people speak, that they limit themselves to two minutes, and I'm going to ask John if he would do some timing for us, just to make sure.
I will.
Is there anyone, does anyone on the board have comments?
I guess a question, Arice. Is it the condition of the trees that we're concerned about, or concerned about because somebody wants to build a utility trench near the trees and we're concerned about disturbing them?
That's why they want to do that.
No, you don't get to speak until I tell you to speak. Sorry. Tom?
What, I'm sorry.
My question is, is the concern about the health of the trees themselves, or concern about someone digging near them and unsettling them?
Yeah, well, you know, what I do is I evaluate the health of the trees as fast as I can see it. I did put in that phrase, that little bit about, that will certainly injure these trees, be they healthy, be they sick, whatever, whenever you trench these trees.
I guess my question is, what precipitated the, this coming on our agenda? Did someone look at the trees and say, they look sick? Or did someone say, hey, we're going to be digging a trench near here, and we're concerned about disturbing them? I'm just not sure what we're talking about.
I think it's the latter.
Okay. Okay. And so the white pines, they have very shallow roots, Tom?
Correct.
Okay. Personal, I'm not a tree expert, but my own personal experience is that one time I had a bunch of trees cleared near my house, so they wouldn't fall on my house. But it disturbed the roots of the other pine trees, and that, you know, within a few months, one of them fell on my house, one I did not get rid of. I'm very concerned about, I just want to understand how close this trench is, and Tom, you know, can you, you know?
No, well, the trees are in a triangle, probably.
Right, I can see that.
Six feet apart on each apex of the triangle. And my understanding is that trench will pass within two or three feet of those trees, right through the center of them, or immediately a jet. I think we have a plan here. I think Jody, or someone has a plan of a lot exactly where the trenches go in relation to the trees.
And I guess my question would be, Tom, in order to ensure that the tree roots are not disturbed or unsettled, in your professional opinion, how far away from these three trees, you know, where would we want to limit the disturbance? Like, what's the diameter of the area you want to protect?
The further away, the better. If they were hardwood deciduous trees, with deep rooted, they're surface roots, it could be lead in the air. To be honest, I would, if it were my own house, I wouldn't want the trees there if I were, you know? But I certainly always like to see trees replaced whenever trees are removed.
Right.
If a couple of screening small evergreens were planted here, I think, you know, I, unfortunately, like I say, I didn't get a chance to talk to, immediate about their concerns, but maybe after we hear their concerns.
I think, is there anyone here from the people who are asking to have the trees taken down?
Yes.
Hi. Yes. Just give us your name and address, and give us a short description of what you want done and why.
Okay, my name's Johann Ross. My address is 1 Windermere Park Extension. These three trees are basically the front of our property. And we are digging a trench to provide utilities to a back lot that goes behind our house. And the trees, how they stand today, like there's been talk of today, like the roots, I think that we're concerned about them falling and doing whatever. If we're digging a trench, it would also be easier for us to dig the trench if the trees were not there and we didn't have to worry about them. We're willing to pay to have the trees come down, you know, a cost to us. And it, I think what is one that hasn't been brought up tonight is that there is, the power lines are also right near those trees. And so, I would say that, and I don't know if Tom agrees, but that the power lines are also a concern, as it is today. Looking at how the trees have grown and how the power line is very low already, but it's in that vicinity, which is, I think, worrisome for the rest of the neighborhood in terms of the power source, so.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any other questions or give you more details, but I'll stay to the minute, two minutes.
Yes, please.
They already took.
You need to tell us your name and your address.
Yes. They already.
No, tell them your name and your address.
Oh, Miriam Moss. At 3 Windermere Park Extension. They already took down a whole big row of beautiful, beautiful red-buried bushes, peaches, and some of them, my husband planted them. And at the time, I don't know if he knew that that was town property, or we thought it was our property, I guess. We planted them. But they, they're stripping everything away from that area. It's so bare, and it was so beautiful before.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Also, to add to it, Mountie Combs, 3 Windermere Park Extension. Ms. Ross is not being truthful totally, okay? First of all, with the pictures that I have put in, if you look at some of them, with the trees, you cannot go straight back, because we own some of the trees that are on that property. When they did, there's a problem with the survey, that there's going to be a very soon a lawsuit between us and the Rosses, where they say basically, we don't own anything on the right side of our property, which, there's trees that we clearly own. The trees that, they took down one tree of ours, and they took, some of the branches they've damaged. You cannot put power lines and water lines straight through because of our trees, you know, our bushes and everything, unless the town wants to have a domain net, and I, we're not going to, we'll fight that if that happens. But there's clearly, it's one thing for them to be able to take their own trees down. There's nothing we can do about that. But they took down a tree and a bush that was on town property that the town allowed us to have on there, because it added value to the town's property. That's why they allowed it. Okay? And then we have our trees on our property, and for the plans, which we now notice, cut into our property, they're saying they own part of our property. So unfortunately, there is going to be a lawsuit over that very soon. That you can't go straight back. There's no way you can put power lines straight back and run into our property. Now, the trees are in perfect condition. They're, they look fine. They were, what, actually, the tree that's damaged is the one on our property. It's got a lot of hand holes, and I've asked them to come look at it and everything. You know, hopefully, we don't have to take it down, but it isn't. But the other ones, there's no holes, and they look fine. I looked at them. In fact, you can look at the pictures if you want. There's pictures of them right, right there. So there's no reason to take them down. The town owns that property. They look beautiful. They provide shade for our house. They're not on the Rosses' property. They're not anywhere closer, actually closer to our property.
30 seconds, can you finish it up?
Okay. So the evidence is right there, if you want to take a look at all of it.
Thank you. Yes?
So I just have a comment about Jody Morse, 11 Jersey Lane, and I am with the Friends of Manchester Trees, and we care a lot about trees, as everybody knows, and we would like to save any trees that we can save. But my understanding is that these are town trees. They are on a utility easement, and our town tree policy specifically allows the select board to make a decision on removing trees that are interfering with utilities. So if there's a survey issue and lawsuit, I don't know anything about that. All I'm saying is that if this is a utility easement that is owned by the town, I guess, I don't know, and somebody needs to use that, and it's going to damage the trees, then there's good reason to allow those trees to be there. I would add that Friends of Manchester Trees, we're in the business of planting trees, so if there's another place to plant a tree, either at 3 Windermere Park or somewhere else on that street, we are happy to do that, and we do that at no cost to the homeowners.
Greg? Do you know anything about the ownership of questions of the property?
Well, I think, you know, further down the line, that's something that I think we need to get involved with.
Okay.
But in terms of the trees that are in question, it's very clear that that is within the town utility easement, and that those are clearly the three trees in question. I don't think there's any question about who, whose owners they belong to. So they are town trees.
They are town trees.
So it's your jurisdiction for these three. You know, further down the right of way, if there's a dispute about where that line lies, that's something that the two owners are going to have to work out.
Right, I understand that. Is there any possibility of rerouting the utility trench? I can't tell, looking at this, how wide anything is.
Is there a possibility of requiring?
I guess the question is, that I have is, in order to do the utility work that the homeowners need to have done, is there any way to avoid disturbing the utilities that are very close to these trees? Because that, like I said, I have a personal bias here, I think it's very risky. I just don't know the answer to that question.
So that becomes a much more complicated.
We're talking along the board.
So I have a question. I assume that this utility, it's a utility trench, it's going to be under underground lines, and it's coming from the utility pole?
Well, there's also water and sewer, you know, water sewer and gas.
I mean, I'm looking at the trees, and I see the picture, and the three trees, and there's a utility pole next to that, and I assume that's the origin. Where the utility line goes after it gets 10 feet or 20 feet away from the trees, maybe that's a property jurisdiction issue, but it's not a tree issue. But right around them.
But there's also water, sewer, and gas, which are.
Which are right next to the trees there?
Right, they're in the same area.
In the same area. I mean, the telephone pole is kind of amidst the three trees.
Right.
If I look at that, right next to, you know, it's within, I guess, 10 feet of them. But I guess the trench is expected to go straight through, and I assume that is driven by the property line confinement.
Correct, and falling within the existing easement for the utilities.
You can't make a left turn or a right turn.
Correct. In order to make that left or right hand turn, you would need new easements. So obviously, the homes that have been built, have been built with that, with the knowledge of that easement being where it is. So it's, it's a bit of a complicated process to relocate the easement.
So.
Can I just add something?
Yeah.
So we could say remove the trees, but with the stipulation that we're going to replant something more appropriate?
You could, yes.
I've dealt with white pines and had serious problems, so I know they get loaded with snow and winds, and they end up on cars and houses.
The sound of a crack while you're sitting 10 feet away from it is frightening. Don't ask me how I know that.
I've been through it, so. Yeah, I mean, that kind of makes sense to me.
My feeling is that we have a policy.
Yeah.
Trees that are in a utility, you know, easement. And I think, you know, I'm set to debate this thing forever.
Can I just add some information? Okay, first of all, the original plan stated that the power lines and everything were going to go down the Rosses' property. If you look at it, they have a trench, like an opening, where they drive all their construction trucks and everything else. That's where originally, in the plans which are in those pictures, were supposed to be going through this area under their property, not under that. Second, the argument about branches on the power lines, they can very easily cut the branches. We, on our tree that's on our property, that's in front of our property, it's on the town. The town property kind of goes in a weird box, like from our property over to the Rosses' property, in a diagonal box. That tree had everything hanging on, like literally leaves hanging on the power lines, and the town came and they just, they had national grid come, and they cut the winds and everything. So they very easily can do that. That argument doesn't hold water, because national grid can very easily come and cut the power line, cut the trees.
We're not, we're talking.
I mean, cut the trees on the power lines. Yeah, well, that's like.
The only thing we're talking about.
Well, they can cut the branches, so for them to use the argument about branches on the power lines, it's, they always do, yeah. That's, that argument doesn't hold water, because the town tree, they just came back in October and cut power line, cut the branches.
Thank you, I think you've made your point.
But these are underground utilities we're talking about, not over there.
The branches are just a mass lower utility.
Concerned about the disturbance of the.
They have a water sewer and gas.
That's what the concern is, disturbing the roots.
Like a broken branch versus a broken gas line.
Yeah. Okay.
So are we going to talk about both trees and then?
Let's talk about one at a time.
Okay. Do we have to close the public hearing, or? I'm just, I'm asking procedural questions, Greg, because we opened a public hearing on trees.
So why don't we take up the second tree?
Just asking.
Yep, go ahead. This is, this is fine. The second tree, Tom?
Yeah, the second tree is a Norway maple. I'm not sure if we planted it, but it's what we call a double leader with included trunks, and definitely has hardwood rot. I would consider it a safety issue, and I can understand. It's in decline. I can understand their concern with the tree. It's very, very close to two houses that have a very, maybe only 10 feet apart. It's right in the middle, in the corner up there, and it's on the weather side of the building, where it's a Norway maple. Basil damage in the root flare, it's just, like, there again, maybe they'll allow us to plant a small flowering tree, something that'd be more suitable for the location. But the tree's in decline and very dead half, and I consider it also a hazard tree to their property.
Does anyone on the board have questions? Does anyone in the audience who are online or want to make a comment? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Ellen Flatley of 23 Lincoln Street, where the tree is located. I'm here with my mother, the property owner. The history of this tree, it was a town tree that was planted about 50 years ago. It was planted, it was this little tiny tree, smaller than my brother, and now it's much taller than our house. It has, I don't think we ever thought it would, will be, I wasn't informed when this happened, but this is what I hear. We never thought it would grow that tall. It does cause, you can clearly see that it is sick, and it does also cause extensive moss to grow on our porch roof, that we're going to probably have to replace that roof, and some lichen growing on the side. So we appreciate Tom, if he's good with it, we're good with it. And also, just to say to the Friends of the Trees, we are, of course, willing to have a smaller tree planted in that. There's some beautiful examples on Lincoln Street of smaller flowering trees that we would love to have in its place.
There are other comments? Are we ready?
I move that the select board close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Second. Discussion? John?
Yes.
Anne says yes? Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. On the first request, which is the removal of the three pine trees, is there a motion?
I move that we remove the three pine trees from the Windermere Park extension.
Can I amend that motion?
Sure.
Just with the stipulation that something more appropriate will be replanted.
Accepted.
Further amendment for the advice of Friends of the Trees.
Yeah, okay.
Accepted.
We'll have a discussion by the board. John?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
Anne says yes, Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
We have the secretary.
I'll get to the mainboard. Yeah. Okay, is there a motion with regards to maple tree at 23 Windermere?
I move that we remove the maple tree at 23 Windermere.
Yes.
Jeff says, yes. Brian, yes. Kathy, yes. Anthony, yes. And John?
Johnson, yes.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. Close the public hearing?
Yes.
I move that the board close the public tree hearing.
Second. Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
John, yes.
Next, by the way, please, use the town administrator recruitment update.
So we have with us tonight John Petron from Community Paradigm Associates. John is heading up the recruiting effort and is really here to say hello and just give a quick overview of the process and take questions that you may have.
It might be better if you angled slightly sideways so that, yeah.
TV land can see you.
The TV land can see you.
TV land again. Not too far back because.
Oh, where am I at? So, thank you.
Let me just, for those people who are tuning in, yeah, right, who are maybe watching this in review, Greg will be meeting us next year, and it is time for us to find a replacement. And we have, the town has hired a firm to find as good a replacement as possible. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. John Petron, Community Paradigm. So I'll be the lead person relative to the search process. There'll be several people involved in this process. So our principal in the firm, Bernie Lynch. Bernie is a retired city manager out of Low, was a town manager in Chums for 20 years. I'm retired out of town of Burlington, town administrator. I was 40 years in municipal government, about 35 as a town administrator during that time. So I've been working about five years since my retirement in 2019 with the firm and doing searches of this nature. So first, we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you here in Manchester by the Sea. And we've already started. So I've been in town a couple of days now, met with several folks, department heads, and we're getting the various pieces of information we need to develop the position statement. So you've seen the samples, you know, what we put together. So we'll put together that position statement, and we'll use that as our advertising tool. So what we're looking at, we worked with Greg to have a schedule that works for the town based on his retirement date. So we're looking at basically having a position statement out in probably mid-January, which is good timing because MMA will have, they now call it Connect 351. I guess I'm not allowed to say annual meeting anymore, but Connect 351 will be occurring towards the end of January. Both Mr. Lynch and myself will be there, so it's an opportunity to see a lot of people face to face. I was at the recent managers' meeting, talking to a couple of people already. So we have our, you know, you know, we're talking to some folks at this point in time. So with that, the apps will be due in February, and then we'll meet with the screening committee, which you'll be addressing in January. We'll meet and work with the screening committee in the February, March timeframe to review the applicants and to interview applicants. Again, the screening committee will make the decisions. We're not choosing, you know, candidates for you. We're recruiting candidates. The screening committee will review, will have interviews, and they'll, their charge will be to develop a list of finalists to bring to the select board. We're looking at this point in the April timeframe to have interviews before the select board for finalists. That will give an opportunity to work on the appointment, the contract procedure, you know, with a new candidate, and potential notice that any candidate has to give if they're working, you know, as a manager, someplace else, which can be up to two months, can be up to three months. But typically, it's a 60-day notice in many communities. So that will be ready for a very smooth transition for when Greg's looking at retirement. So that's the process in a nutshell. You've received an email from me last week, and I've asked that you contact me. A couple of you have, waiting for a couple more, you know, if you can contact me to try to set up a one-on-one with myself. And also involved with this will be Jen Lefferts. Jen is a communications expert. You had her information in the package. And Jen will be assisting with the writing of a position statement. But we'd like to talk to you individually about what are the characteristics you're seeking, you know, in a town manager? What are some of your goals, the goals of the town and the board? And we also like to understand whether projects. And I've been getting that in talking with the various department heads, with Greg. Greg sent me some information as to that. So we try to pull all that together. Between Bernie and myself, we'll be talking to candidates, and it's good for me to understand all this as I'm talking to candidates. Because people want to know, is it a good, you know, is it a good fit for them? I'm trying to, you know, work with you as to a good fit for the town, but it has to be a good fit for the candidate. And candidates want to know, can I be successful, you know, going forward? And that's my role, is to talk about that, you know, with them going through. So that's the process going on. It'll be a little bit challenging because of location. Location is, you know, like in the old real estate term, you know, it's, you know, that's very important. And your location where you are, right now, we say, we look at almost a 45-minute, you know, commuting area. People aren't moving, you know, necessarily for jobs, you know, in the market of today. So again, we'll be working to do that. We, you know, we talk to a lot of folks on a regular basis. Both Bernie and I are involved with the MMA Suffolk program. We see a lot of people through that. Had somebody in a class not too long ago.
Southern student, southern student.
Absolutely.
You're a little star with your refrigerator, too.
She survived the day with me. Let's put it that way.
Yes.
So we talked to a lot of folks, and, but that's, that's pretty much the nutshell. I know you've got a heavy agenda tonight, so I could talk about this for a long time. But I'll turn it over to the board, you know, as to any questions you may have of me on the process.
Yeah, yeah. Good, good to meet you, John. I think I was on a telecon with you, was it about a month ago or something like that? I've got a couple of questions. One, let me just start off. The first question would be, what is a typical tenure now for a manager? In the past, say, five or 10 years? We've had a very good run with, was it 10 years, I think? Okay, I assume that's probably at the outer edge. But tell me, what should our expectations be with the person that we're?
The minimum we look for is three years, but that's not, you know, that's the minimum. What we talk about is five years. If you can see five years with a person, you know, going forward, that's very good. You know, it fluctuates with time, you know, as to, right now, things have been difficult in areas the last couple of years. There's been a lot of turnover in the last five years. It was very quiet a little bit earlier this year. In the last three months, it seems like it's picked up a lot with turnover. But typically, I would say five to seven years, you know, is probably a good timeframe to look at.
I know, and maybe it's a function of the age of the person that you have, and is this a whistle stop or is this it?
Yeah, there's various pieces, and it depends on, again, the fit that comes in in the end, you know. Greg was a good fit here. You know, you look at, you know, I did 13 years in one community, seven in my last. So it's different pieces as to what occurs.
Well, as a follow-up to that, you sent us a long list of the folks that you had recruited in a number of communities.
Yes.
And I checked it over, and there were four towns where you recruited in like 2020 or 2021, and then the town showed up again a few years later?
That's correct.
Okay, so I understand that's on the short end of things. And I'm just curious, was there something that kind of came through with all of those? Maybe they all had different situations as to why they turned over so quickly. We don't want to be on that list twice.
So a lot of times, it's, how's the board working with the administrator? The board can turn over. So sometimes, you know, it brings a different feel, you know, what's going on. And, you know, sometimes people are lucky to have, right now, in, you know, Massachusetts as a whole, there's been more turnover in, you know, select boards. And you don't get as much consistency or continuity, you know, from that side. That can have an effect. Sometimes it's, you know, you're hiring someone who's, you know, looking for the next step, you know, quicker, you know. Some communities realize they're not paying, so that, you know, if they can get someone for three years, that's a good run maybe for them. That's not the norm, but that can be the good run. I think it's, you've got to look at each situation.
I understand the board's expectations. I mean, some boards say, we got a guy, I hope we can hold him three years. I don't think that's where this board is going.
No, I get that, and you're in a better position. You know, Greg and I have talked about that, you know, especially with the pay situation and so on. You look at that, and some of the, you know, the things that are going on, this is a good community. Having somebody, you know, coming out who's had a dozen years, you know, in the slot, that helps. And people will say, stability seems like it's good. So you've had, you know, other people, your police chief has, you know, been with the community, you know, a very long time. You look at some of that with department heads, and people will say, it's a good community, you know, potentially sign up with.
I certainly have questions when I meet with you, but I'll refer to my colleagues.
No, I guess my, just the overall process, when do we need to finalize the steering committee, screening committee, excuse me?
By the end of January at the latest. So I'm hoping by your second meeting in January.
And I saw that you mentioned it briefly in your letter in the cricket, but I haven't seen any promotion of really trying to encourage people to come forward, like the at-large residents we talked about.
Let me make sure Tiffany's getting that out.
Yeah, the only thing I have seen is that your letter, your column in the cricket, that's the only mention I see. Thank you.
No, I think that as we develop, I know that the biggest challenge we have is 10 years' worth of infrastructure and projects. We've got 50 years of, I'm not going to call it neglect, but certain other areas were more important. And now we're facing, the can has been kicked all the way to the end of the road now. And so I think that if we're looking at 10-year projects, sure, everyone else said the same thing, is that, I mean, someone who's going, A, is project oriented, but also has ability, who's not looking for this as a pit stop.
Sure.
All right. I look at Manchester sometimes as a place where people want to end their careers or where they want to start their careers. And I think we're looking for someone who wants to enhance their career for, you know, a long period of time, and that's the biggest concern I have.
And that's what I've been hearing as to facilities and stuff. So we'll be highlighting the need for a facilities review, you know, going forward. So that'll be highlighted in the position statement.
Have a facility review.
Yes, we have one. What's that?
We did lose and have a facility.
Yes, that's my understanding, but it's now trying to implement something.
I mean, just, we'll have to see how this unfolds, but eventually, we want to get down to three candidates. So what, what's the timeline looking at that, where we want to be then?
So again, that'll be the April timeframe. We'll be looking at, you know, it'll be up to the screening committee, three to four, you know, unless you set a direction, we say three or four candidates, you know, at that point, to bring to the, to the select board for final interview.
So we want to be at least by April?
Yes, April works well. And at this point, that's what we're looking at based on the timeframe. Our biggest issue tends to be getting people together, you know, screening committee members, because they'll, you know, getting schedules together is difficult sometimes. So that's why you getting it in January, then we can try to work up a schedule that they can all agree to for interviews.
You mentioned some towns are unable to hold on to people because they don't pay much. How is our game range?
I think it's, reviewed it with Greg, I think it's reasonable, you know, so it'll be in the market to look in this area.
So you'll see later tonight that I do have a recommendation to have a salary reserve fund, not only for this position in case it's needed, but some other adjustments that may come out of the operations audit. So you'll see that later, we'll be talking about the budget.
The way we do it is, we put it in saying a number on the salary with a plus or minus, you know. And then if you've got that candidate, you know, that you, you know, you would, you know, really like to negotiate for, that will be your decision, you know, at that time to make.
A lot of times, you will see a boost as you bring on somebody new. That's just the nature of the process. It'll depend on experience.
Depends on user experience. I mean, that's not necessarily true.
It's not universal.
That's why we put the plus and minus, you know, we don't want to, you know, we want to make sure the process is fair both ways, you know, with that. So that's why we work a plus or minus on the number. And then that's, you know, that's your negotiating position, you know, in the end, as to where it can be.
Would your screening interviews be live or?
No, that's all confidential. So the only, when the process goes through, the only.
That's what I mean, live, I mean, in person.
That's up to the committee. So we offer it. I do whatever the committee wishes, you know, if they want Zoom.
You're comfortable doing it by Zoom.
We still do a few Zoom here and there, mostly live now, but we did three years of almost all Zoom. So we have the capacity to do that. So that's up to the committee. I offer it to the committee as to how they want to do it.
Do you have anything that you need to tell us that we haven't asked about?
No, I think, again, this was just a, you know, more of a broad, you know, overview discussion tonight. I'll be back to, and I'll work through usually the chair and the administrator as to when we're ready in April, as to, you know, the process, how you want to proceed, what your process, you know, at that time. So we'll talk about that, you know, when it comes a little bit closer, you know, on that, and make some suggestions, you know, on the process at that point. But I think we're good at this point. So again, if, if the rest of you can just respond to me, so we can get your, you know, have, you know, the opportunity to have a quick discussion over the next week or so, you know, with all of you, so that we get that as well. And certainly be, you know, willing to have any level of discussion, you know, and answer any more questions you may have. But again, we'll be asking you questions about the community. But again, we've been in today and spent, you know, a day here, a couple, last week or the week before, and, you know, talking to folks, and we're gathering information so that the candidates will have that. So when they receive our position statement, it's hyperlinked, you know, so that they can find information about the community so that they're prepared coming into it. Okay. Great, yeah, same here. So we'll be talking again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next article on our agenda is to review and approve, I hope we're not required to approve.
Nope.
It does not violate the open media law. It does not violate the public medical law.
It doesn't.
Because frankly.
Possibly approved.
I don't usually start with a long discussion from me, but I'm going to this time. Because the first time I got involved with harbor, with, um, the assignment of boat moorings was with the inspector general's report on favoritism and private gain in the assignment of boat moorings. And I think we've agreed generally that we're not so worried about private gain, but I am very worried about favoritism. Um, and, um, this is, the regulations as presented by the harbor advisory committee would work very well as long as we have, uh, honorable people on all sides. But the purpose of regulations is to control the behavior of people who aren't honorable. And I am very concerned that the boatyards could use mooring, the moorings that they've left for, um, to reward good customers. I, I think that is not the way a harbor should work. Other harbors work that way, but I don't think that's the way I want to see Manchester. And, um, to that end, I'm going to suggest that I spend some time between now and our next meeting and come up with what I think would be, would reflect the opinion of this committee. And I, I have heard everyone. I don't agree with everyone, that's okay. I can put down, I can represent other people's views. And I will put together something that I think would keep a, a less than, a greedy boatyard from, for example, saying, okay, you're the first one on your, on the list, I don't want you, so it's $9,000 a year. And cha- charge something different, and to be, neither boatyard, I have checked the Manchester Marine, they do not list their slip prices. It's contact the boatyard. And I don't think that's the way we want to handle these problems at this point. So that's one aspect. Um, it's also going to be important to make sure that the boats that are on these moorings are actually the boats that were taken off the list, so there isn't substitution. Um, and there are a few other odds and ends. Um, so I would like you to give me the opportunity to put together a couple of paragraphs, it's going to be longer than this, that describe how commercial moorings, um, should work in Manchester.
What, um, what kind of timeline would you be looking at the next meeting?
Next meeting. I would get it to you, I hope, a week before the next meeting, so that you have a chance to look at it. We can't, we can't exchange email for obvious reasons.
Right.
But I would, I would like everyone to have a chance.
Just to touch on one of these bullet points, you said that neither marina, uh, list their prices. As long as, I'm not a big fan of government intervention, okay, or requirement of things, however, if it is actually, uh, it's a public-private partnership is what this amounts to, can we, uh, to, to address that, and we say this is the price, or you're
Or require them to be.
Require them to tell us, this is what the number is.
We would require, I would like to require them to tell us what they are going to charge.
In advance.
In advance.
And then advertise it as well.
Yes, so that everybody knows what they should be expecting.
It is, like I said, it's the normally, I don't really care what the harbor position is. It is our, yeah, our budget.
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of in agreement with you. And these guys know what slips cost.
Oh, yeah.
They're in the business, and they can put a number and give it to, give it to Bion. Just say he can.
The other, the, the other element that I did not mention is I think it's important that Bion identify the, or the harbor master identify the candidates and not have the boatyard go down the list.
No, no, no. Yeah, I think we, we agree on that last time.
Okay.
You're on the same.
Okay. Okay, um, well, we just have to have consensus on it. Um, we have, we have five minutes before the next meeting, before the next.
No, we don't.
We don't, actually.
Oh, housing trust.
Well, they've got five minutes.
In that, in that way, um, I will take that as a consensus. I will get, um, a potential regulation out to you, um, between Christmas and New Year's.
Yeah, as long as we have enough time.
Yeah. Okay, then, um, sorry. I probably can't read in the agenda. Um.
Isn't that one of the requirements for job?
In order.
Right. Affordable Housing Trust update.
I'm Chair, thank you. John Foyrbach, Chairperson of the Affordable Housing Trust, here with Muffin, Peggy, Sarah. I believe Gretchen is probably, she's probably online.
Yeah.
Um, when we met with you in August, we departed with the understanding we'd come back, um, in a reasonable time to give you, you know, an update on the activities. So I see this as two-part. One, um, when, when we had the meeting in, in August, we left with the, what we, what we wanted you to understand is the importance of the Pleasant Street property as a, as an asset to the town for the purposes of housing, to help us move the, the plan that we're working with the housing authority that involves Newport, um, the Plains and, and loading place. That's what we left you with, and it was based on our very close work with a, a consultant who, when he looked at the request for proposal and he looked at the site, says, John, trust members, there's just not available land. And he stressed that. So we came to you in August and said, this is what we're doing, this is what we've learned, what we left with is, yes, some challenges with land, and we wanted you to just hear that from us. So part of my, our presentation here is to see if there's been any further discussion on that, but, and I, I leave that with you. Stu, on, before we leave, if you wanted to answer that, that'd be great, but, um, my responsibility now is really just to report back on what we've done. I think there's been some positive developments since we met in August, and I think the most positive is, um, me and fellow, a couple fellow committee members met on site with the Concom, met with Steve Gang, and it was very encouraging because we looked at the site, and he sort of pointed, we, we, we sort of looked at areas we were possibly considering for development, and he was talking, pointing out the Wetlands delineation. Um, we, we went to a spot that, when we actually did our proof of concept study five years ago, it's the same location. It's on the other side, if you're on Pine Street going out of town, and you just, just go right past the MHA, there's the two private homes, there's a, there's a trail going towards the back there. There's a significant amount of MHA property right there. When Steve looked at that, you know, he just, he, he felt like it was quite reasonable. So it's, it's very preliminary, but that gave me assurance that what we're talking about at Newport isn't a pipe dream, that we could possibly do something on that. Second thing is, we piggybacked with the town that was working on the survey. Um, it was a very limited scope of survey, it was more in the back right. We then got the survey team to do a survey of the entire site, so we can get the exact location. And equally significant, we'll see, uh, points of interest on the site, a typ- a typical survey. And my, my understanding, as I summarize for folks, is that, uh, the fieldwork is done on that, and we should see a survey by late December. Um, and what we hope to do is use that to, to guide us, uh, as we're trying to formulate a plan, but more importantly, I think, is to give a sense to any developer who'll be responding to a, a forthcoming developer request for proposals. Um, at the same time, we then, still on that plan of, of working with the MHA, we've got a survey in the works right now at the Plains. That's something we didn't have. We have some question about land, uh, boundaries. We'll have that, we'll have that completed sometime in, in, in January. I think that'll be positive. I think, again, that's something we'll be able to make available to a developer. They would like to see what the meets and bounds are, you know, I think, so when they're formulating a location of buildings, they'll have something that's, that's, that's quite real. Um, we've, I've continued conversations with the, um, I was going to say the Salem Housing Authority, but it's really the Marblehead Housing Authority, but they're working with the administrator out of the Salem Housing Authority. Um, Marblehead has got a similar type of plan that we're proposing. It's a public housing authority, but they want to create new units and possibly rehab. So we've learned, we've had some conversations where they looked at our request for proposal, and they said, John, I think you should do this differently, I think you should do this differently. Uh, they introduced us to the developer who was the designated developer, spoke to the designated developer, who, who talked about, uh, possible state financing sources that we were a little unsure on, but he, he gave us the impression that with the new state bond bill that came in, well, I think within the last year, there's some avenues that, that hadn't really existed that could be potential sources of income that could finance, uh, as a subsidy to tackle the development that, that, that we're looking at. Um, I think that's it for that plan. I think, um, Housing, Affordable Housing Trust has met on two occasions in executive session, and we've, we're examining possible purchase of a Manchester by the Sea property. Uh, we've gotten to the point where we've done an appraisal of it, and then I think our meeting tomorrow night, we're giving an executive session again on that matter, but we'll also have a, a, a subsequent property, another property, that we'll be discussing tomorrow night, possibly pursuing. So those are two possible properties in town. Um, I, I think good news for everyone is, hasn't happened yet, but, um, I've worked very closely with North Shore CDC to really refire the, the application for the 29 units at Powderhouse, to get the state to focus on getting as many that are income eligible on the state SHI. We've had back and forth, uh, we had turnover here, North Shore CDC had turnover, the, unfortunately, sort of languished, but we've got, um, Town Planner here, we've got Affordable Housing Trust, we have North Shore CDC that are laser focused on, as I just met with Mark today, we're this close to getting back to the state. Mark, the Town Planner, uh, gave a recent middle about three weeks ago, the state got back to us immediately saying, where is this document? Where is this document? We've addressed that. So I think we'll be in a position, probably, hopefully in a couple of days, where we can say, our application is with the state, and now we could sort of do our little push to the state to say, how about it? Um, I'll give a quick summary that we closed out the, um, our little COVID program. Peggy can talk about that if you want, um, where we assisted town residents for rental and, um, mortgage assistance. It's probably one of the best, um, examples of a trust within the Commonwealth getting involved immediately to help residents that were, that were hurt by COVID. Uh, we have a summary that we served 48 households, we put out about 178,000 over about three or four-year period. Um, but I think that's, and you heard this speaker talk at the town meeting to support the MBTA, so we, we met, we took up the matter, we voted to support the, the warrant, and I was the representative to talk on the Affordable Housing Trust behalf.
Yeah, so a question. So you're looking at a couple of houses that you may purchase here in town?
Correct.
Properties.
Thank you, thank you, properties.
Okay, excuse me, properties. But properties in town cost a lot of money. What do you got, like a one and a half million dollars? Is that leverage somehow, or, because, because the money will go pretty fast and something like that, unless you have a partner?
Yeah, I, I agree. It, um, we can only go so far. I think we would use it as leverage with, uh, it could be North Shore CDC, it could be Harbor Lights. I mean, they, they could take the lead and put acquisition money, but, but with the understanding that we are there as a partner, and we, we, we know the source of funds that we, we have. It's not unusual for a, a town or an Affordable Housing Trust to play that role with, with a private developer, whether it's nonprofit or for-profit.
Okay. And they have monies through, I don't, you know, either, either state programs. I don't know that they have investors, probably not, but they've got state programs that can leverage the money. Okay.
Not think it's more than updated than that.
Yes.
I have a question. Um, I think last time we talked about, uh, the need for this board to make a decision about, um, Pleasant Street, DPW site. So, um, given these other avenues, is that still an urgent need? I'm seeing shaking heads.
Yeah.
So then my question to, um, uh, Greg is, where are we with the testing that the DPW was doing on the School Street site to know if we could?
So that's, that's just getting underway now.
Okay. When will we know, I guess, is, um?
Um, probably the February timeframe.
In February?
We'll have at least a much better sense of what's possible.
What's possible.
And Kathy, in response to your point, I don't want to leave the select board with the impression that when I said we had good news on Newport, that we were adding, I think it wasn't affirmation that what we were hoping for and assuming is possible, and we, we got that word. So we, there wasn't any, that act didn't create any net new units. It really just, Steve confirmed for us that, you know, it seems like it's a reasonable plan.
But we still need to have a discussion and a decision around what we do about Pleasant Street. The linchpin right now is waiting for this survey on School Street to be completed, or testing, I shouldn't say, not a.
Yeah, some geo test.
Geo testing, yeah. We need to understand what we can do on that site before we know what's, what we can free up on, on Pleasant. So, okay, so February.
Houses are keeping very busy.
Yeah.
We're trying.
I'll turn this to the job. My affordable housing.
Thank you for the work, keeping people in the houses, um, through COVID. Sure. Really important to those 48 households. I was not aware you were doing that.
We benefited greatly by an anonymous contribution from a town member. We probably put in probably over 100,000 of that, 178, maybe even more than that.
And my organization administered the program at no cost of the town. I run a nonprofit actioning, so we operated the program with no admin charge, no anything. We did it at no cost.
Thank you. Um, good luck with, with the properties and, and especially, um, getting the Powderhouse Lane properties onto the SHI. There are a lot of people who put money into that and, and will be gratified when finally it begins to do, do some, something.
Yeah, Peggy and I really got involved in that in the last month or so, and we've kept in touch with Greg. So as we move, Greg will be the first.
Okay. Let's make up the second.
If anything, a signature on the updated application. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, for your work.
I guess everybody ordered 35.
Yes.
Oh. Yes, please. Oh, yes, yes, please.
Oh, the Boober.
Oh, okay.
That's on the list. That's pretty, no, that's fine.
Yeah, no. Fine. Um, let's, no, um, there's no reason to make a picture of this, even if you want to.
All of a sudden, I'm enjoying something.
You made it, you made it clear that, that it is within our purview to extend your license for New Year's Eve. Um, and we were wondering if you could do us a favor. Um, there is, we're hoping to, um, do some work on the culvert, and we're waiting for a second.
So I gave my, my, with my attorney, so he is just getting ready to. to go back and forth. So as soon as my attorney does, I should sign it.
So unfortunately we haven't heard back from your attorney. So it's a little frustrating on our end. So.
I apologize for that. I will make sure I contact him to see if they want any more anything.
So an alternative is, is to go ahead and sign the chapter 91 and then work on the details of the easement language as a, as a secondary step. And that way it doesn't hold up the permitting process, but it still protects all of your, all of your rights.
Okay.
So otherwise we're going to lose almost $6 million and I don't want to be around when that, when that bridge fails.
I don't want to be around when the bridge fails. I don't want to be around when our business fails.
Exactly. So.
Destruction and I just want to make sure I'm protected. And so what I've heard is that, you know, they're going to remember me and my heart, my wall. Well, this all goes through, but he doesn't want to put anything right. So I just feel like what if something happens to me? What if something happens to, you know, like Nina's not.
We're happy to put it down.
And so I just.
Would it make sense, Greg, for you and you and Chuck to get together?
Yeah. I mean, I, like I attended the meeting almost like, you know, like five years ago, seven years ago. Chuck knows what my concerns are. You know what I mean? And but I don't know.
I don't want to lose $6 million.
No, I don't want to lose my business.
You will if that bridge falls and fails.
But so I just, I, I just have counsel. So if I have counsel, I just want my counsel to help me with that case.
So I, Greg, if I'm understanding the conversation here, there are two different things.
Two different things.
There are two entirely different things.
There is, there's the chapter 91, is it permission?
Correct.
Permission to do work.
So chapter 91 just needs a butth is to say we, they can proceed with their permitting process.
So it's what we need now is the permission to proceed with permitting process. The secondary step is to work through, you know, how do we protect everybody financially, blah, blah. That's secondary. What we need right now is the chapter 91 document signed. And what's the deadline before we lose the $6 million?
Yeah, we're, we're rapidly approaching it by mid-January.
So.
Well, my wall, I've been asking because they keep telling me it's really not part of the project, but I can't, as a, you know, a layperson, I feel like I have a very difficult time seeing how that's not going to be destructive to my building and my business and my wall, my well-being. And so I have approached people about redoing my wall, but wanting to wait until this project is done. So I've put it on pretty projects. And that we have, every time I've got with Chuck, literally for the past five years, I've gone in and said, like, you know, I want to make sure that this is part of this project, that the wall sustains. I know that you said for things, but I keep saying that's my carrot. And he keeps, and he's never, Chuck is never coming to the business, never talks to Kevin Beatty, never talks to any of the addresses. Like he's just like, my businesses are worried. And so we are all worried.
What are you worried about yesterday?
I'm worried about my building and I wanted, I want to get, I wanted that report. And I've been asking him, while you're doing this, while we're getting the permit, because if this is a difficult permit to get and I have to get the same permit to do my wall almost, right? So that I, let's all put this, put my wall in this part, put my wall.
And we have said, I believe, I know I've said it to you and Chuck has said it to me, that we will make you whole.
I know, but I want it in print. That's all.
Yeah, I can understand that. So what is it going to take to do that, Greg?
So my suggestion is that if we can commit tonight, the sit down this week with your attorney, then I think we can move forward.
Yeah, I think that's right. And listen, I'm not, I'm not the attorney on this matter. I have somebody else that's smarter than, than somebody.
I think we want to make sure that the attorney understands the time constraints and the financial devastation to this town. $6 million is a lot for this little town to absorb. I'm choking on it as I speak. So I'm not sure that the attorneys understand the deadlines and we have to get this resolved this week. So.
I have to talk to your attorney tomorrow. He responds.
Set up something this week with him and the town.
Yeah, let's be in touch tomorrow. We've set up a date.
Excellent.
Okay. With that, I'll move that the board approved Boober's request for an extra half hour liquor sales on the easy.
Why not? I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I apologize.
I pay attention to that or? I move that the board approved Boober's request for an extra half hour. Is that what it is? I thought it was an hour.
It was an hour as well. You told me 12:30. Wasn't that what's in the?
Yeah, it was, the letter said 12:30.
Yeah.
So happened that half hour is good?
I'm confused.
From the amendment predicated on.
Chapter 91.
Chapter one, chapter 91 license permit being signed. We'll do that.
Can we do that?
Yes. Your prerogative.
Okay.
It's your amendment. So yeah.
Do you want to vote on the amendment separately or?
Oh wait, so it's a condition on that being signed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Not, not the easement part and all the financials. Just the chapter 91.
We can't even go up to bid.
No, that's okay. I just, I.
You're not giving up, we don't believe, and I think your lawyer, your attorney will tell you, you're not giving up any rights as a, you know, as it stands to your particular business. All right. That happens after the fact. But we can't even have this discussion until we get all the ducks in a row as far as the permitting side. You have the last business to sign off on.
I'm the only business that's touching the wall.
But as far as the chapter 91 license, we need you to sign off as well. We acknowledge that there are other attenuating circumstances that we will address.
But no, we addressed them and I want to address them now and he doesn't address them. So that's why I'm thinking. That's all.
It's not productive to go back and forth.
No. Greg knows what's got to be done.
So let's set up a meeting and I think we can make progress.
Okay. Do you want to?
So we don't have a second though? Oh, you made an amendment?
Amendment. Second amendment. Okay. Let's vote on the amendment first. Do you, do you, first, do you accept Brian's amendment?
Yeah, as long as it's, yeah.
Okay.
Then we just vote on.
Then we go down the whole thing.
So it's only based on me signing?
Yeah, that's it.
John?
No further discussion. Yes.
And since yes, Kathy, yes. Brian?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So do we, will we sign that? Do we have to sign something?
Do we have to sign something too or just?
We have to move on here. Or so, we just went by the office.
Like we.
I think it's just part of the minutes.
No, it's just part of the minutes. Yeah.
So we don't have to reconvene at some point?
No, no.
It's just for that one day and.
So we still need a second on the original motion, right?
No, you accepted the amendment. So we voted on those.
So we're done.
Okay. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Now, it is 7:49 PM on Monday, December 16th. I will call the finance committee meeting to order. I have with me in the room Maury Creighton, Peter Twiney, Tom Parsons, Dean Nahadas. I'm Sarah Melish, the chair, and I'm going to leave. And the old man is on Zoom. Greg, confirm that. And I'm not me. And this meeting is also being recorded.
We're in trouble.
Okay. So we're at, what is typically feel, feels as a kickoff for all of you for the budget process. There's been about three months worth of work already by department heads. We've been working hard and putting together numbers and working not only on the operating, but also the capital budget. So thanks to them for all their hard work today and we'll continue to, to work with both boards as we go through the January, February, as we aim for March, final, final set of numbers. Also one of your thanks, special thanks to Town Captain Andrea Melville. He really helps hold it, and May Melton helped pull all these numbers together and put the graphics together as well. So this will just be a high level overview. Tonight is not designed to get into a lot of back and forth on the budget, really introduce it to you and to highlight what I see as some of the key critical decision points that will be needed during the, during the coming months. I will say that I feel like this budget process that we're going through is, feels different for a couple of reasons or a couple, three reasons. One is that while inflation has significantly come down, typically government is lagging behind in our reaction to those inflationary pressures. So union wages tend to lag a bit behind those pressures and the, and the price pressures on supplies, energy, et cetera, tend to lag a little bit. So you'll see in this budget, those pressures coming to bear a little more than you have in the last couple of years. Another unique aspect is that we are in the middle of an operations audit. So we have a consulting firm on board who's, who's sitting down with department heads, will be sitting down with many of you, asking your thoughts on how operations might be different in terms of new services or different services or new organization with an eye towards how we might be more efficient and more effective in our services. So that may come into play as well as we get into January into February. Consulting is, will aim for the end of January to have recommendations to all of you. And so that may have an impact on this budget as well. And then thirdly, the, the school district budget is very much in play in terms of a big unknown at this point. Significant pressures on, on wages. They're contractually obligated to just under a 6% increase in their wages. And they've been given a very high health insurance number for next year. They're hoping that that'll come down and that'll make a major difference in their final numbers. But right now they're looking at in the mid twenties for a percentage increase or even higher. So that's, that's going to put real pressure. And the placeholder number that I show in this budget this evening is just that. It's a placeholder. It'll change. And we'll talk a little bit about that as, as I get underway. So we've, we're using the Clergov platform and we'll have that available to all of you, also to the public as we get that all uploaded. We've had a little bit of a delay because of the refreshing of the platform, but Andrea's working hard with them to get all of the detailed background information up on that site that'll be available to you as we, as we go forward. So I always like to just start with sort of the big picture and the global numbers. So about a total of 41.5 million. It's actually a little less than last year's total expenditures because last, current year because of some higher capital expenditures, primarily the ladder truck and the Mason building had an anomaly high current fiscal year. So we're actually down a little bit in terms of total expenditures. But again, almost 20 million of that is earmarked for the schools, both the regional school district and the Votech school. A little under 15 million for town operations, very similar number for capital expenditures on what I would call the normal capital, not the unique capital, as I just mentioned, not the Mason, not the fire truck as examples, but your sort of run of the mill capital. 3.2 a little higher than, than last year. I keep saying last year, this year, because this is next year. And debt payments down a little bit as we retire old debt. Enterprise fund, very similar, a small increase at 1.8. As a placeholder, I just kept community preservation projects basically at the same number. That'll vary depending on the actual number of projects. But to make year to year comparisons easier, I typically keep that number the same. And then your state assessments and OPEB, other post employment benefit payment, the liability we continue to pay and tax abatement set aside. So that comprises the 41.5 million in total. Again, you've seen this slide before. It's just, and I'm not expecting to read it all. So just a sampling of the services that we're providing from water and sewer, you know, every day that, that water comes out of that faucet and is good to drink and is used for domestic purposes. And you can also flush down your wastewater and you don't have to think about it. It's a lot of the stuff people take for granted, but it's, it's the stuff that town staff are working on day in and day out to provide really strong services to the town. And I think people appreciate that, but I, I always like to remind people during budget time what their dollars are buying. About 3,200 lane miles of, of roads to plow or put salt down on, 1,000 tons of trash, 700 tons of recycling, 120 tons of compost now being processed in a new facility that serves as a regional hub. Thousands of bills, almost 10,000 utility bills alone on an annual basis, 9100 tax bills that go out, excise bills, et cetera. You can, you can read the list, but it's obviously a long list of services and this is just a sampling of all the good work that staff are doing and that the dollars that people pay through their taxes are providing. So obviously every budget is based on the number of assumptions and various goals. Key assumption is that citizens are wanting the current level of services. They, they are expecting those services to continue. Also assuming that we want to continue to make good progress on our backlog of capital. We continue to put new monies into capital every year on that regular capital. And what you will hear a lot about this year as we work through the budget is talking about that, you know, 25 year plus facility plan and trying to make some solid commitments towards those longer term facility needs. We do see higher demand. We try to absorb those within the departments. We will see one staffing proposed increase for a part-time clerk to go to full-time in the town clerk's office. And I have a question, my care on fire. The chief has asked for a deputy chief, which has been in the, in the request column for a couple of years now. And it's something that we'll, we'll need to talk about. And then of course, we want to keep maintaining our strong fiscal posture, maintaining our triple A rating, which is a rarity amongst municipalities. We're one of a few municipalities in the state that have that triple A rating. It's good to hold on to that, particularly when we're looking at a lot of bonding coming up and to maintain our reserves, which this budget does. Some of the specific priorities that, that the board here, the select board have identified, certainly expanding housing diversity has been an important piece. We just heard an update from the Affordable Housing Trust to see how we can keep moving forward on that. The desire to, to close on the Mason Lodge, our portion of it, and to get going on building that in addition to it, to house the senior center. I mentioned the facility planning. We're, we've done some good studying on some climate impacts and how we can position ourselves to be more resilient. And we need to start implementing some of those plans. And sort of standard policies of goals of wanting to continue to maintain that strong fiscal stance and as always, trying to figure out how we can. fiscal stance and as always, trying to figure out how we can, with our partners in Essex, figure out the, the perennial funding challenges that the district has, the school district has. And that could well come to a, a new head this year, given the challenges that, that are there. And we continue to work, make progress on the whole governance process, how boards and committees are, are communicating with each other and as I mentioned, that operations audit is there as well. So really three fiscal challenges that are not new perhaps, but are, are worth emphasizing. Certainly, as I mentioned, even though inflation has, has come down, we're, we're dealing with some lag impacts, particularly in wages. Union contracts on the town side are between the three, three and a half, plus there are some new steps that are built into those contracts that had been signed a couple of years ago now. And health insurance has reared its double-digit inflation again. We were having a pretty good run there for a number of years when we were down in the two, we actually had a, a year of zero increase, 2%, 3%. Last, this current year, we had a 7% and right now the projection is for a 10% increase on the health insurance side. So that's going the opposite direction of where we wanted. We're being told to be prepared for that for the three or four year run, but no crystal ball is perfectly clear on that, but that's what we're being told at the moment. And again, we talked a lot about capital and that'll continue to be a focus and I really already made these comments. And then the, the climate resiliency efforts as a third and then the school, the school challenges as the fourth, as the, as the four big, big items that I see continuing to be front and center as we look at the budget and the challenges that, that we face. So in terms of 26 and what new dollars we might expect. So the preliminary budget that I will show you in a minute calls for a 1.6% tax increase. One reason why I'm holding back on that is because of the school. That assumes only a 2.5% increase to the school budget and frankly, that, that could double. 2.5 could become easily a 5% if not more for Manchester to contribute to, to the district. So we're, we're going to need some taxing capacity in order to, to fund the school budget. So this, I'm assuming for this current stat, for this current version of the budget to be at 1.6%. We have new growth, about $20 million a year, that's pretty consistent. Goes up and down a little bit. You know, we generate between 185 to maybe $250,000 in new revenue. For this current year, we generated 230, I'm showing 200,000 in new revenues from new growth for FY '26. On our local receipts, these are, you know, the, the excise tax, permit fees, other fees that are charged. We had a, a big adjustment in the current year, we boosted it up to 3.4 million and so I'm, right now I'm showing that being level funded.
I, I had expected that we would be increasing local receipts to reflect the building permit fees from CST, which are $300,000 or $400,000.
So I, I wouldn't put that in your operating budget. I would, I would target that towards capital because it's a one-time.
Yeah, but it's just going to convert into property taxes i- in subsequent years, which is going to be about the same amount.
Right, which I'm targeting off of, for capital. So that's a discussion.
I understand you want to see that.
Yes, we will.
For '26, alright.
I mean, this, this starts in July of '25.
You're not going to be pulling permits sometime in '26.
'25, I think.
They'll be pulling permits probably in the spring.
Yeah.
I mean, we should, we could see some of that money in the spring.
Right.
So, but we can get into that as we get into the budget. My, my recommendation is that it gets, both, both those monies are targeted towards, towards capital. So, a very modest increase on state aid, we, we get very little in state aid being, because we're a regional district, the bulk of state aid to school aid, that goes straight to the district. So we don't, we don't see that in, in our budget. Enterprise funds, there'll be a small increase in rates, we're seeing a slight decrease in volume sales, so we're anticipating again, pretty much level dollar receipts there. So if I add up those new dollars, about $750,000 in, in new money and then redirecting some of that higher than normal capital expenditures, both to capital and to some, some operating, for a total of just under 1.2 million in, in total revenues. And so where does that all go? So that's what this next slide shows, where that 1.2 million roughly would go. So salaries overall, we have a 3.5%, 3 to 3.5 for, for wage increases, plus some steps, plus a couple of boosts in hours for some positions, two, two part-time positions. So that's just over 400,000. As I mentioned, that health insurance number at a 10% increase, about 154,000. Your pension increase of 6, 6.2%, just over 100,000. Other expenses included in that is a, is a pretty healthy boost, the legal, our legal expenses have been trending much higher, even, even if I take out the, the 40B project, which obviously was a, was a unique case, but even without that, we are definitely spending more on legal than we have in years past. I guess it's just a matter of things getting more complicated and more litigious as life goes on. And then I'm showing for here, I'm showing a 2.5% increase on the school budget for four, for just over 400,000. So all of that comes to 1.2 million and again, that assumes that 1.6% tax increase. And then you see those, those notes down below. So again, just to highlight some of the key changes, so again, most, mostly staffing is the same. The, it does show part-time clerk going to full-time in the clerk's office, town clerk's office, and then council on aging clerk was split between the council on aging and the conservation commission. This budget moves that person full-time to council on aging as they gear up for the new senior center operations and expanding programming. And then the, the question here, it's not budgeted in this, in this current form of having the deputy fire chief. I think a lot of that, in my mind, that will partly depend on our success in working with our partners in Essex to see if we can start down the path of some shared services. There may be some opportunities to do that soon, so we will continue that discussion. Mentioned the benefits going up and then the energy supply, legal are some of the bigger changes in, in the numbers when you go through line by line. So the capital funding, again, we will spend a good amount of time on this. We've been running for the most part for the last 10 years without doing bonding, paying on a pay-as-you-go basis, that has served us well, but that, that run is a lout over in terms of being able to do some of these larger facility needs that are, that are coming, coming due. And so we will be looking at over the next, potentially five years, of some significant bonding in each of those five years. GPW facility, PFAS filtration systems, potentially the elementary school, that's underway, that design work is underway. The, perhaps a little further out, but a public safety facility out of, out of flooding harm's way to make sure that we can continue to operate when the needs are highest. So we have a lot of, lot of needs there and it'll, we're working on a, on a multi-year plan that tries to minimize the pain, but we're not going to eliminate the pain because we're, that's, we just have to do the bonding at some point, there's no way around that. So the current plan, and we'll talk about this further, but it's showing upwards of an additional 2.5 tax increase for the new bonding over the next, each of the next five years. So that'll be a significant point of discussion. Do you see what you think about that and see if that is palatable for the, for the taxpayers to, to bear and given the needs that we have? So just, just to put this in context, what does this all mean for, for folks? Property values, as we talked about in the, in the tax classification hearing, we're up to 1.7 million as the, as the average home value and the median is at 1.125. So at our tax rate that was just approved by the, by the state at 9.15 for the current year, down from 9.30. So for that average value home, that's 15.6 and for the median, it's 10.3 for an annual tax rate. And just as a benchmark number, what does a 2.5% increase look like for the mean, it's just under $400 and for that median home, just over 2.50. And then just to put that in the context of statewide averages, not that it means a lot for us here because we don't see those kind of values here, but anyways, the, the average, if you look at statewide, is about $665,000 for a typical home, tax bill of around 11.50 per thousand, generating 7600 tax rate. And tax increase last year, average statewide was 2.8%. So that translated to just over $200 in, in an average tax bill. That just gives a little context for where we are. So some of the, the key, key decisions here, that I think we, we need to focus on and spend the bulk of our time on, looking at staff decisions. Again, I mentioned that deputy fire part, position, something that's been requested for last, the, the second year being requested and wasn't put in this current year, is requested again for next year. And again, I mentioned the additional hours in the, in the town clerk's office. It's actually, reverts back to what we had quite a few years back, but it's been a long time since that's been there. So obviously we need to make some final decisions around staffing. There may be a couple more that emerge depending on the audit and recommendations from the operations audit. Maybe some shifts that might be recommended as part of that study. So there may be a few more added to this list, but that's currently what's, what's in the hopper. And then obviously I've been talking about capital funding, we will need to put significant time and energy into mapping that out. It, it's, it's time to make some decisions, certainly on at least some of the facilities in order to, to make sure that we're starting down the road and, and to give some ability to do the necessary design work and planning that's needed to tee these projects up. These facility plans don't materialize overnight. It takes a, it'd take a couple of years just to do the design work and vetting it all and getting it ready to go out to bid. So there's some upfront monies that are needed to make that all happen. And then certainly, I think there'll be a lot of time spent debating school budget and it'll certainly take your time and attention to help move that debate along. Obviously with the override failing last year from Essex, that, that, to many people that was a setback and it'll be a, a challenge to, to get that, perhaps to, to be a yes vote in Essex. There's always, always that possibility of a super town meeting if it, if we fail twice to agree on a budget. So it, it sort of begs the question about the regional agreement and whether or not that needs to be cracked open and, and reexamine. That won't be a solution for '26 because that'll be a, that's at least a two-year process would be my guess to open up that agreement and to come to any new terms if, if that's what wants to happen. But it's still out on, it's still on, on the table as a potential to take a look at going forward. Now those are, as I say, those are those major challenges. And I, I've done this every year, I close on budgetary about choices and, you know, do we have the appropriate size services that, that are appropriate for what people want? Are, are we doing the right things at the right time with the right people? Dollars can be put in different categories and priorities can shift, so that's, that's where those choices come into play. You know, we haven't, obviously had very little commercial growth in town. We have really our first major commercial project in, I would venture to say decades with the CST project. So that's phase one, the phase two have been received approval for permitting, so that's going forward, you know, and that will certainly help with tax revenues and can help with those capital needs for the gap. So that, you know, brings us to those, the next steps coming up. This is, as I say, some of the launching of phase two of the budget where it's more of a public process, of year meetings in January and February into March. PennCon will be meeting weekly to, to go over these numbers and to meet with department heads to hear more details about the, the challenges and the requests. Keeping the, the select board up to date and there'll be some joint meeting opportunities over the next couple of months. The goal of finalizing everything in March as we prepare for April, April town meeting, the fourth, fourth Monday in April. So that's a quick overview of, of the budget and some of the key issues I see needing our attention over the next, over the next few months and look forward to your input and finalizing the numbers and putting a credible budget for the voters. So happy to take any initial questions people have, but as I say, this, tonight really was just laying out the highlights and setting, setting the framework for the work ahead.
I just want to say there's one outstanding piece that the finance committee is still waiting for and that's that compensation study.
Yeah.
If we can get that before January 8th, that would be great.
Yeah, I've got a list of things that, that you asked for.
Yeah, okay.
And frankly, we were just, I, I needed to get this done first and then.
Right, got it.
But I'll get you, I'll get you that before I, I leave for the break here next week.
I just had one thing. So we, I think this is the year we, we meet with Dan Sherman regarding OPEB.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if that might make sense to move that meeting earlier just because of these healthcare impacts on pensions. We might want to know about his inputs earlier in the budget cycle rather than, we usually catch it at the end, you know, it's kind of like a filler meeting before we go to print.
And, and to add to that, the information we receive from him is different than we did in the early years and we're no longer seeing the, the required dollar amount.
Right.
It's, it's lost in all the numbers.
So let's, let's bring that up front.
Yeah.
Not burying the lead, as they say.
Exactly, yeah. So exactly, if we fund X, what's our deadline, when, when are we going to pay it off? Because we were originally gearing up to pay it off in like '27 or '28 because we were paying much more than the required.
Right.
But I think we've lost some of that momentum.
Yeah, not, not, yeah, we're pretty much on target, but what you could do, I mean, we are, we do have higher than targeted in the reserve, in the fund balance.
Yep.
You could, you could. You could, you could put a healthy amount into the OPEB and then free up some of that annual contribution and redirect that towards capital, for example.
Right.
Bonding.
Because I think a milestone out there is particularly with big capital, understanding when OPEB drops off and when debt from the high school drops off. Because that frees up a lot of.
Yes, and I've got that modeled in that multi-year plan.
And if the Essex Elementary is going to come on earlier, it might be good to get rid of the OPEB. They're over.
Correct. Right.
So while we're talking healthcare, where are we on moving the town employees to a health savings account approach?
So that's, that's part of the mix for the next round of negotiations?
Well, not everybody is, is a member of a collective bargaining unit, correct?
True.
So I guess what I'm, in order, that's a big change, but it can save big money. And sometimes the way, you know, you can take that approach is by making sure the salary people go first, demonstrate the savings, and it makes the collective bargaining process easier. Because I'll tell you, once people get comfortable with it, the young folks really like it because they can save a lot of money.
Yes, they can.
And, and I'm very concerned about our hesitation to move out on something that will save us money. It may not save us a lot in the first year, but it can demonstrate how much we can save later, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so we did meet with our health insurance advisor a couple of weeks ago. And we were talking about the timing of how to roll that out.
I mean, for the, for the non-union folks, I mean, we, to me, this is a Nike, just do it, you know? We, we really got to move that along. Because the, to your point, the health insurance is not getting any more pleasant. And it might also be an example for the schools, you know, that perhaps they could leverage. Not everybody there is under collective bargaining either. You know, I think we got a lead here.
And I think all the major companies moved to that ten years ago.
Mine moved like 10 years ago and, but it was uncomfortable, right? It was a big change and people were nervous, but once people really saw how much they personally could save, they were all over it.
We struggle a little bit with how many plans we can offer, but we can adjust that. We can adjust.
Yeah, I just, I think it saves big money over the long term, so we really can.
So I wanted to verify the number of the CPC revenue because it's different from what they're carrying on the CPC spreadsheet.
Yeah, I didn't, that's just a placeholder.
Okay.
I just, I just put it in as, so it's, so it's consistent for me to use, so it doesn't affect the bottom line.
Okay.
But yes, that will, we'll get the right number in there.
Okay.
Warren, Andy, do you have anything? You awake, Andy?
I'm awake.
Do you have any, any comments to make, questions?
No, I'm just listening. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. He's not feeling well, so that's why he's staying home.
I'm thinking about my collective bargaining position.
Well, I'm willing to forego a raise this year.
Okay.
Very generous of you.
I was about to offer you a hundred percent raise.
No, no, I don't want it this way. Per account.
John?
The devil is in the details. You know, so.
So, so speaking of the details, there are some errors in what you received. I think what I'll do is I'll just email those to everybody.
Okay.
Rather than, I was, I was about to walk through them, but I just, I think it makes more sense to email that to you and you can find the pages. So the other thing that's not, there are no pages on those. The first thing I would do is have you write down page numbers on each one so that we can easily go to page to page. The first seven pages are numbered, but they didn't continue through, so. I apologize for that. But yeah, there are, we did, I found some errors in some formulas, so we'll, we'll get those corrections out to you the next day or two.
Just while we're on the big picture, one of the big things we were hoping to do is to phase Essex Elementary with coming off the, the other debt for the high school. It looks like that's being pushed up. Then one of the things we might look at to soften this flow of successive increases is to put off the DPW until that bond comes out, you know? Or until TST comes online, you know, when we have more revenue for that. That's just something to consider as an option to reduce.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're going to have to have a discussion with the schools or maybe the school building committee to find out whether they're willing to do bands. Fond anticipation notes, which would, would delay when we have to start repaying principal and therefore have lower payments until that 2032 that we were hoping for. I, I think that's important for us to look at.
One of the problems is we've been kicking cans down the road so far.
Right.
At some point, we better have to put some priority on some other facilities under the school building.
Right, and, and, and the price tag doesn't have to be 20 million for a garage, right? We, we need to get creative.
Everything's 20 million.
Isn't that interesting?
It's only the school work.
So that, that's on my list, but John was going first. John, do you?
No, the only thing that's scary is the two and a half percent plus the two and a half percent. And I'm doing the math. And that's 30% in five years compounded about. And that's a lot.
That's a lot.
And there are a lot of people that are going to do that math.
Well, and it may be that in this town meeting, we can somehow get that across to people and try to get some feedback. We need feedback.
I think people need to know it sooner rather than later.
Right.
So that we really kind of.
Can I, we did, we others did a great job with the 3A.
Yeah, yeah.
MBTA zoning, was getting outreach and was getting out there and explaining. And maybe this fiscal year we should be really hitting that as high as we did with the, because when it came down to town meeting, you guys had all the answers because you already heard the question.
Right.
Right. And I mean, it went smooth. I thought it was, was very well presented and I think that we should use that as a template for the budget process.
I think that's a great idea and specifically to work our consistent assumption, which I'm not sure is accurate, which is that people want the same, right? Because same level of services. And I say that because I'm not sure we're asking, I, I think we could be asking the question a little bit differently. You know, in the private sector, you might ask each service owner to come up with, what are your top three underutilized services? Or, you know, you have different ways of asking the question and then you could say, hey, this service that I'm performing here, very few people use this, you know? Maybe I can save some money if I don't do this. But you don't know what the impact is going to be unless you ask the residents. I, I don't know that we'll ever be able to really test our assumption unless we present the residents with some potential, here are some services that if we didn't do these anymore, or we did them less frequently, we could save X number of dollars. Is that okay with you? And maybe it's not, maybe it is. But I think there's a general, you know, people here in this building, they care so much about the residents that they're very quick to respond on everything. But when you're delivering lots of different types of services, not everything needs that same high level of response. And so I just, I, I think we need to think about what we offer a little bit differently and specifically in terms of the headcount, potential headcount increases. I, I don't think we should go near that until the operational audit is completed. That, that would tell us whether or not we have the right headcount. But I just, I think we need to be asking these questions a little bit differently.
I would also suggest we need to accumulate the information we have. Because every department is receiving requests in, from the residents. And if we were capturing that.
Absolutely.
We would have a better understanding of maybe where our current services aren't sufficient. Maybe.
It's about rightsizing them, rightsizing.
But you get, the town gets daily communication.
Oh, absolutely.
Residents, and I think if there was a way to capture it, it might.
So it's basic service management and, and that would also, that data would also help us understand if we need to be charging for certain services that perhaps we don't. You know, this is all about service management. I just think the data collection is very important, but I also feel that the department heads know where they're, you just ask them, you know, if we, if, if you, we could stop something to save you time, what would that be? And they probably come up with, you know, they know their areas. I think they would come up with some, you know, low hanging fruit that we could at least look at and discuss. And if, even if we didn't save a dime, it would start the process of getting them to think that way, which I personally feel is necessary. Because what I'm concerned about is what I saw in the summary is our biggest area of the budget, if I read it correctly, outside of the schools was general government. And it was increasing the fastest. And that makes me a little.
That's because everybody's health insurance is there.
Well, but, and that's why I was poking at the health insurance plans, right? Because that's an area we can save some real money. So I just think when you see general, anything, GNA, just big and growing faster, it's, it's something we, we need to really tickle again.
We really need to look at our fees also because we.
That's what, exactly, yes.
We upped the ZBA fees to 1,000 in application. We have not received a single complaint.
Exactly, exactly.
It's, it's a drop in the bucket when you're spending a million bucks.
Our town employees do a lot of wonderful things and respond for free, you know? And so we just, it's an area where we, we need to take a more, I think, business oriented approach. So I think the only other thing I wanted to mention here was the, I was glad to see that we are talking about, you know, the operating budget. I, I, you know, I think we need to focus less on the rate. We obviously have to figure out what fits in the two and a half, you know, percent guidelines, but it looks as though we're proposing an operating budget of an increase of 4.9%.
It's actually, this, this is 3.8.
Okay, still, we had like 7% last year, now that's three, just in the operating I'm talking about. And so people aren't getting that type of a raise. I mean, I don't know anybody who's getting that type of a raise, so I just think we need to be really cognizant of the budget and, and look for opportunities to do things. These are some pretty big numbers.
I've got a question in terms of efficiency. I mean, one big reorganization here is land management. I think I shoved under lame man.
We, we, yeah, we put ComCom, we put ZBA, we put HDC.
Right, right.
All under one roof.
And from an organizational perspective, that's efficient.
We don't know yet.
I guess we don't know yet. On paper, it looks pretty good.
It hasn't been implemented.
But I, I, I don't know that that's necessarily a money-saving initiative. I was kind of looking through the budget and saying, does this save us anything anywhere other than maybe some managers don't have to speak to as many people because things are, does it save a body somewhere?
It was supposed to go hand in hand with some reduction in our committees as well.
Oh, you mean the volunteer committees?
Yes.
Oh, we could save money there.
Well, not so much money, but when, when you save, when, when, when town employees have to, like you said, have to talk to fewer people to get things done, there is an efficiency there and, and a focus and things can get done faster. And when you can do things faster, sometimes you can save money. But it's very hard to quantify.
Yeah, yeah, that, that have to work through. I just, in looking through the budget, I saw things moving around, but I didn't see any money disappearing per se.
Yeah, so that, that's really a response to better, better management of the paperwork and not having.
That's fine.
Drop, you know, slide between the cracks. We get a lot of criticisms about, you know, one board approves something and another board approves it and the two permits don't seem to jive or there's not follow. So it's, it's an attempt, it's an attempt to, to plug those shortfalls. It wasn't so much an attempt to save a lot of money.
Get balance check. I'm good for now. Just one thought.
Go ahead, Warren.
Just, Greg, I think your articles in the Cricket are really good. For example, last week's, I wonder if it would be worth it to have a, this may be open a can of worms, but for more, for feedback or ideas, please send to, and, you know, I think this.
To Maury Creighton.
Careful what you wish for. But I mean, essentially requesting feedback on particularly those articles about the budget stuff and capital. You know, any place we can get feedback, we do sometimes operate a little bit in the back on some of this.
And I think the challenge with feedback, and I think we saw this in the MBTA zoning, was we received the feedback when we had specific things on the table. That people felt impacted them and they could react to.
Right.
The town budget's different. They, other than ALS, people don't feel, you know, that they're personally impacted. They don't understand the personal impact until they have something specific and that's what makes it much more difficult.
That's exactly right, and that's why I say go to the department heads. They know their areas and, you know, it's called management by walking around. In a $40 million budget, you can pretty much trim 5% without working too hard. Okay, 10% gets ugly.
Don't be schooled back.
Yeah, well, be happy to. Sorry I couldn't make the last meeting, but I, I think you're exactly right, Sarah. We need some, I, I think we could be doing things differently, but until we start presenting some very specific examples to the residents, we're not going to get the feedback that is needed to help us trim in the right places. Because we talk about managing the capital, right, to make things fit. Well, the other part of the puzzle is pulling back a little on some of the operations growth so that we can also help things fit that way. We, we, we talk about adding, adding, adding. We don't necessarily talk about the reshaping and the rightsizing and, and that's important as well, given the millions we've, we've got ahead of us here.
I think my, my only, what scares me about asking the residents that question is they used to a high level of services. The answer might come back that they want more services.
But, but then as long as they're willing to pay for it, right? And so it will know what the fee, right now, we're just, we have a bunch of assumptions, right? But real feedback is something you can work with, but right now it's just, oh, everybody wants the same as we've been giving them. Well, do we really know that? You know, we haven't asked the right question, you know? I, I don't disagree with you. They can come back and ask more.
You might not get what you're looking for.
Yeah, just don't ask the question.
Right, yeah. I don't know, maybe it's.
Not asking the question just means the budget continues to grow.
That possibility's out there.
And, you know, 4.9% after a 7% or a 3.8.
It's been a long time. We had pushback on the budget at town meeting, which is saying to me, it's not. I'm not sure how much concern there is about the tax rate and that's what I can't get my hands around.
Well, it's not the rate, it's the, the bill they get, right? And so.
I haven't seen the capital budget yet.
Yeah. And once again, this is about trying to prevent something bad from happening a couple of years from now, right? Sometimes you've got to slow down your operations in order to build wiggle room so that you can afford that other stuff you have to do.
Maybe that's an article that has to show up in the paper fairly soon in terms of, this is kind of where things are going. You know, high level, five, six years, let's see who writes letters to the editor or calls you.
I know who's.
Or calls Maury.
I mean, it's a really simple example. I mean, some of us have been on this long enough. We were paying outrageous, what I considered outrageous, snow plowing bills for each storm. And we were plowing both sides of the street on the heater and other places within like 12 hours of a storm. And we said, whoa, we've got to cut back on this. What if we just plowed one side in 12? What if we just plowed one side in 12 hours and left the other side? And some of the selectmen at the point who were making big bucks said, we get all sorts of calls. And we said, well, let's monitor that. So we went one side, 12 hours, we saved $30,000.
Exactly, right.
And overtime drivers.
And the number of calls that came in, seven. So it's like, wow, seven calls, $30,000.
I remember every storm.
Let's keep thinking about this.
So haul the snow out of there after every storm.
Yeah. That's exactly right.
So it's just kind of like where the information comes from.
And I, we, we used to like shut off the, I'm not sure anybody needs that system anymore. Let's just shut it off, see who complains. Nine times out of 10, you know what? Here. And it's, it's, it's not through any malice that this stuff happens, it's just an accumulation of stuff. And once in a while, you've got to clean out the closet.
But I think the point this year of, of listening to as much information as we can get is a really good one.
Maybe have some budget items in the time.
You can do trash every other week. That'll get people's attention.
Well, we had issues over trash.
Oh, man.
When they switched it to every, they did switch
Different carrier or different service provider?
No, no, we switched the trash pickup to every other week.
Oh, you already tried that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's like dogs on the beach.
Yeah.
There were too many diapers. That didn't work.
Or maybe recycling, I suppose, I don't know.
Yes.
I was just going to say on the trash one, I mean, we, we are considering a pay, you know, per week, or just put it as an outside fee. But it's not going to be so much a savings as it is, you know, taking it out of the tax bill and making it a, you know, everybody does their pay as you throw bags. We're going to need to do like pay as you throw carts. So like, you know, some of that stuff is on the table, but I don't know that it would be a net negative so much as a net neutral.
Net negative, yeah. Sorry.
Doesn't save you money and you still get the calls.
Right. I take my own trash to the transfer center, I don't.
There are a lot of communities that do that.
Drop your trash, that would help.
I don't have very much trash.
Rule now. I've just heard you offer it.
Yeah, so the, for the carriers to do curbside, they will no longer, another year or two, no longer have crews picking up. It'll be all the automated
The bins.
Ah, yeah, seeing communities with that, they got special trucks.
They have, they have the special trucks and the special container.
And only one person on the truck.
And just a driver.
That's common.
That's, that's coming real soon.
Yeah.
It's coming real soon. But that'll, it'll be an upcharge for all the new carts. So. So. I don't want to get into detail tonight, but that's.
Then we won't have the bags anymore. Pay as you throw bags.
I know towns that are doing it.
Have you ever watched one?
Yeah, I've watched it.
Zip around or anything?
My son's town, that's what they do. The biggest pro, it's, it works, but the problem is the trash guy comes at 5:00 in the morning. And it is a noisy, noisy activity.
Today they came at 5:00. Late.
That's all right. So in other words, consumers might have to buy their own barrels or something.
Yeah, depends how we set it.
Yeah.
Then you got a problem with the people that don't buy them.
Whose problem is that?
Well, then, their trash is there and you're
And they're the transfer station people.
Interesting.
There aren't any more. Shit, do you have? Okay. I think we still have Ocean Street, um, the angel and other things to do, so. I move to adjourn the finance committee. Second. All in favor, Maury?
Aye.
Peter? Dean?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Sarah? We're done. Thank you for coming, thank you for knowing.
And the PowerPoint's going to be It's not an attachment to
I did send the PowerPoint.
It's not a PowerPoint.
Yes, it, it looked like one.
It's the book, the book wasn't PowerPoint.
It was blank though.
No.
No.
It was a PDF.
Of the book.
Or a spreadsheet.
Yeah. I must have done something wrong, I guess, then, because I clicked on and nothing, I mean, I got
I can send the video.
Peter?
Well, that's, I know, I was wondering what I did wrong, that's all. Well, anyway.
That's what this book is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're in a big, Zion Coliseum.
I don't know, I just
Too much color, he's a black. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thanks. Yep. We have a package of what's been happening on Ocean Street. The last time we discussed it, I believe we decided that we continue to try to restore grants, but that in the meantime, that we do something in the capital budget for a high-level engineering study. As you say, budgets are about choices, and Ocean Street has got some very hard choices.
Good job, so, so.
And getting good, getting professional information, whatever that, but not the duckism, but this is not, this is beyond what our locals are able to be expecting.
Right, so, you know, one of, one of the bigger issues out there is what, what is, what are the permitting agents willing to consider? What do they consider permissible?
I suppose that may change.
That, yes, that could change. Though a lot of, a lot of those are state versus federal, but there are also Army Corps permits involved, so that's obviously federal. So we, we continue to, to scour for some grant opportunities, a couple, a couple more promising ones have materialized, so we're working on those. The draft budget does include in the capital $100,000 to advance some analysis for Ocean Street. So that is, that is in there, that ideally would, would be used potentially as a match to some grant funds as well. That original study was, I want to say it was in the $200,000 range. So we're getting closer, getting closer. So, and that's sort of the short and sweet update, that you've included some money in the capital and we're continuing to pursue funding opportunities.
We were also looking at, for feedback on the application that we rejected.
Yes, we did get feedback. Not remembering the exact details of that as I sit here. I know that we don't score well on these grants due to our low population. Ocean Street is a beloved road, but it's not, it doesn't have the traffic volume that another community might have on one of their main artery routes or something.
You say traffic, this is cars, this isn't people. This is cars.
Right. And then the other area where we don't score well is a lot of the funding is being focused on EJ communities, environmental justice communities. That's, that's a big focus of, of the funders, and again, we just don't score well over that criteria. So that, I do remember those two points in particular. Have to revisit my notes to see what other feedback they might have given.
So who's, who's looking?
Greg, the, sorry, I just thought I'd jump in. The, the biggest one was, you know, there was something like $24 million worth of applications, and there was only 12 million of funding, or maybe it didn't last like 8 million of funding. So it was, it was very competitive, and that was something that, I guess, unfortunately worked against us, given all the other things you mentioned.
Yeah, no, thank you, Chuck, that's, that's a good point. And frankly, we, we've received some funding, you know, recently with, with Masco and then the, the Village CZM grants. And so they do, they do try to rotate it around to different communities. So you often take a break sometimes from a particular grant.
So let me ask a question. So basically, what we're talking about doing is potentially putting a $100,000 in the draft capital budget, so therefore we wouldn't be able to spend that until July, or would it be later than that? Like, would we, could we, let's say we, the voters approve that, okay? And we wanted to go forth and get an engineering study or something underway, would we have to wait until July to begin the process of getting those bids in? Or could we do all of the upfront work in the spring and given, you know, the voter's approval, just cut the PO, you know, July 1 or something?
Yeah, so, yes, we can, we can go out to bid and get that all lined up and have a contract all ready to sign for July 1.
So let me ask a second question then, because, you know, based on the information I see here, this has been going on for, you know, what, six years at least? Longer than that, but there was a lot of inactivity for a long time. So I thought I just heard in our finance conversation, our reserve budget is a little higher than our target.
Yes.
Why do we have to fund 100K and hope for a grant to fill the rest? Why can't we ask for 100K in taxation and, and use the reserve budget to? Basically, what I'm, I don't want to see another year go by with complete inaction. And if we're always relying or hoping to get a grant, to me, that's what's causing the delay. And, and what's the definition of insanity? Keep doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result? So if, if the grants aren't, aren't getting what we need, can we try something different? And maybe the voters will say no, maybe they wouldn't support it. But I don't even think we've put it in front of them recently. I, I just, I'm nervous about relying and hoping on another grant and missing an entire year again. But maybe I'm
So the short answer is yes, you can, you can, you can do that. That's one plausible use of, of that fund balance. So that is an option.
Are there other options? So I'm, I'm just, I, that came to my mind because I heard us talking about it, you know, 10 minutes ago. Are there other options other than the grant to, you know, fund the study? We need to get us the information, we need to make a decision. Because that's really what, we can't make a decision about what to do about Ocean, Ocean Street until we get, you know, a proper study done. And it seems like the grants aren't getting
The only, the only third option that comes to mind is potentially you, you convince a professor of an engineering class to use it as a case study. That's, that's, that has happened. That's not out of the question. There's certainly a lot of good universities and colleges around that have, that could do that. So that's, that's the only third vehicle that I can think of.
Well, so there's, there's $100,000 or about that in this account, or that's what's being, that's what's allocated?
That's in the proposed budget.
In the, in the proposed budget. I, I, I mean, the, the thinking was is that it would be a higher level type of thing. I mean, the other, the other proposals have been, I don't know, 200, $300,000, and this is like, maybe it's matching funds, here's 100, and you throw in 100, et cetera. But if we're looking at a higher level type of thing, we're not looking at that kind of money, I hope. It's less money.
Right, it's not going to be as definitive of an answer.
But how much did the rotunda, I keep going back to that model, because it was so successful in getting information that we needed and, you know, the information to the residents so we could get the feedback and make a decision. How much did the study cost? They came up with the four options. That was probably very expensive, right?
Uh, not remembering the number, I don't, I don't know if you remember that, Chuck, but Renee, I, I want to say it was 100 something.
Because that's what I was looking for, I just thought that was really well done.
This is more, I, I would say Ocean Street is more complicated.
Definitely more complicated.
So it's a comparable study is going to cost more, but again, it's
I ask, what do we expect to find from this new study? Are they supposed to tell us that despite everything that we've been told as far as permitting goes, that there's other ways of getting it done? We can't get permitting from the agencies. Why are we, I mean, we've been told, my understanding, and Chuck's perfectly from wrong, that a lot of things that we need to do require state and federal permits and approval, and we're not going to get them. So are we spending good money after bad?
Well, do we definitely know that, though?
Exactly.
We don't without a study, right? If we don't have a, some kind of study, we don't know what kind of permits we're going to bring forward, right? So we don't really know what's doable.
If, if you want to get the definitive answer to the question of what is permissible, then you, you hire the engineers to, to, to develop different scenarios, and they run that up the land, up the flagpole to the different permitting agencies and get feedback. So in talking informally to, to the permitting agencies, you know, we have been told that, you know, don't, don't count on a major fortification of, of that road. That's not what they're permitting these days.
Okay.
But don't we, we have to keep part of this road?
Have to keep both parts of the road, we don't have to keep the connector.
I mean.
They just don't have to be connected. You have to have access to Crow Island, you can't get rid of the whole road. So they have, something has to be allowed to be done.
Not necessarily.
I think the two beaches, I think it's White Beach.
So.
So we ended, we're getting White Beach.
There's no guarantee that the road lasts forever.
Understand.
No, I, what I'm saying is, so what's the access to Crow Island going to be?
Both.
It may not have road access. I can't guarantee that 50 years from now.
Right. So I think all I was saying, though, is we, I, I believe Chuck has done the due diligence that he can.
Right.
But we're past the point where that's enough, right? And when I say I'm looking for options, they should include a pedestrian, you know, only option for a certain part of Ocean Street, you know, Crow Island. We have to have some definitive options as to what to do, whether it's road access or not. But I think, you know, if I was a property owner along there, the casual conversations are no longer, they're not good enough, right? So I just
That's why people, I think, are anxious to have the definitive.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like they've been, they've been patient. So I just want to make sure that if $100,000 in the budget is not enough, what do we need to get the options so we can have the right conversation, make some decisions, and go?
So I would say it's probably in the 230, 250 range.
So then, do you want to, so then the question is, do we want to go with 100 in the capital and take the rest out of reserve? Or, or, you know, try to ask the residents, do you want to fund the whole thing out of taxation and cut somewhere else? So I just, I think those are the conversations we need to have during the budget process so we don't kick the can another year.
Well, okay, I just don't want to keep asking the question till we find the answer we want to hear.
Right, but that, that's what the options are. They should include road access, no road access, whatever.
You have a hand up there, Mr. Ryan, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, I have my hand up.
Yes.
I actually live on Ocean Street.
Wait, before you start, your, your name is?
My name's Preston Robertson, I live at 100 Ocean Street.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to frame this in two ways. The way I view it, there's two things going on here. The first, it was the general maintenance of the road. And over the last 10 years, And over the last 10 years, I've seen failures in the town maintaining the road as it relates to, you know, there's, there's larger storms, so there's more damage. But unless the road is fixed, what is happening, and you see it between Crow's Island and that bridge, you see failures in the sidewalks because what's happening is the water's getting in there year after year with the freezing, and additional water getting into the storm wall structure. It's eroding. And at the end of the day, what the town has done is filled it with rocks and gravel. And I'd like you all to walk down Ocean Street and see that if you stand on the bridge, all that gravel every year you pour into those sidewalks instead of fixing them is now part of the ecosystem of the marsh. And at the end of the day, I'm very appreciative of the DPW when we have a storm moving the sand. But I feel that's one issue that really hasn't been addressed. And one thing I'll put on record with the town is if I was fully in charge, I would remove all the sand. And that includes the sand at White Beach and the sand in front of the houses because it's on the wrong side of the street. And that's creating part of the, the destruction going into the marsh. Now, whether we can maintain the road altogether, that's item number two. It's not the maintenance item that's occurred over the last 10 years. That's more of what we need to study for, and that is to decide what we're going to do. But I want to remind the town, I just checked the other day, and between the five houses, we're paying 250,000 dollars per year in taxes. I don't believe any of us use the schools, but I think the schools are important, but we'd like to have our roads maintained. So I think it's worthwhile, especially with the tax increases, I was on with the budgeting meeting, to try to push this forward. And at the end of the day, if it comes back and it's four or five million dollars, let's think about how we can monetize it with those two bays. And I don't think that's a discussion that the residents on the street, whether it's the immediate residents or the residents behind it use the street, aren't willing to have to figure out how to get creative. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Um, Chuck?
Right, so I just, I just wanted to speak a little bit to the maintenance of the road. I think that we had actually done what we can with the maintenance, because maintenance is also a budget line in the item, in the, in the budget. So, you know, we, we do do that. And if you actually walk on the area that the gentleman was mentioning, there, there was an effort to put concrete in certain areas. The problem is, you can't tell where the concrete needs to end or where it needs to go in the voids behind the rock wall. And so it's a much larger project in terms of our operating maintenance budget to be able to get, and I, I agree that, you know, I, I guess I would just look at it like, we've done what we can, we, I understand what the problems are, but there's a limit to what we can do to address it. And so we've tried several other things when it comes to maintenance. We tried installing the different erosion control measures on the Black Beach side. We've tried putting in jersey barriers to protect the road on the White Beach side. We put in additional trapstone and revetment stones on some of the other low lying areas. So it has been a litany of things that have been done to try and prevent what nature is trying to do. And I think that is the reason for the study. So I think, I think we're generally in agreement on that. But, you know, it, there is a kind of a limitation to what can be done and what can be done within the permitting confines that we have. So I guess that's just something I want to point out for everyone that, you know, is taking a look at this. And, you know, I under, I understand the issues, but it's not a simple solution. If it were simpler, it would be done, is what I say. So I'll leave it at that for now.
And, and Chuck, this is impressive, and I appreciate that. And I totally understand, I think the DPW comes out there and responds very well, you know, when there's a storm surge. I'm just with you, it's the long-term maintenance and, you know, whether we had to accrue money 10 years ago over time to have enough money to address some of the maintenance issues on a structure like that, you know, that was built probably in the late 1950s. But I appreciate the work that the team does trying to keep the road clear. I'm just pointing out what we've done because we haven't put the right amount of money in it. If you walk the road, it looks, you know, it looks rough. And I think you agree with me on that, and you've done your best, but it is what it is.
Thank you. In general, I don't appreciate back and forth between people who are not on the board. So if it comes up again and you'd like to speak, raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Thank you.
So what do you want to pick up? Kathy's suggestion or that we do tonight or?
I, I just think it's part of the budget process.
It's part of the budget process.
I just don't want us to forget, and if a hundred K is not enough, let's make sure we put before the voters whatever it's going to take to get the answers, because boys will be doing the same conversation next year.
So even in the best grant scenario, it would be basically a match? Is that what?
Um, not all grants require a match, but most do in the 20, 25% range.
Do you need to speak to like an engineering firm or you feel this has been dealt with enough, but you know what the number?
So yeah, I feel like, you know, Chuck was able to get a very comprehensive scope of work and an estimated cost to that. That's what went into one of the grant proposals. So I feel like we have that number.
Yeah, we know that, right. And whatever that number is, they'll work to that number. So. It's the way it works, right?
Well, I don't know, we did a quarter. We have escalated costs.
I, I, I think the outcomes of this are, first, we don't want to have this happen year after year. We've been around this one more than once. If we put the money into the capital budget with some of it coming from available funds and some of it coming from taxation, then we've put it in front of the voters and they can decide. And, and I have heard, okay, sorry, I'm going on too long. I would like to hear from Brenda, please. Okay. So we will, we will come back to this in the budget. One more time, Brenda, if you want to speak, you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's true.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Chuck, along 19 Ocean Street. Just a few points if I may. Um, there's been a lot of talk about what can be permitted and what cannot be permitted. My recollection is the last time this topic was before the board was select persons. I mentioned two projects, very proximate to Manchester, one in Essex, one in Beverly, where a huge revetment was permitted for Anticott College in Beverly. And the On Kanoma Point in Essex, Essex was granted 1.8 million dollars for a $2 million project to restore the seawall where the Essex River runs out into, behind Frains Beach. So I politely suggest that the assumption that these, this, this work is not formidable be reviewed again with open eyes and perhaps open minds and see if there aren't other ways that we might get funding. And I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I had a thought in this one. Part of what we're trying to do is to get a professional opinion from engineers who work in this area rather than relying on the word of mouth. The word of, what, what we've been doing with word of mouth is valuable, but the reason that we're bringing this up again is that we don't want to be relying on somebody's assumptions. So, yes, we hear you and we're trying to address that problem. So when it comes up in the capital and the budget, we look at putting more money into it. And, and we want to get this thing, so. There had been some suggestion of working with the neighbors and I, I can't imagine how that would work.
You mean financially?
Yeah, I mean financially.
Quite frankly, I don't think it's, I don't think, A, fair to them, and B, it's not worth the effort. I don't mean to be glib about that, but the difference between, you know, a $200,000 effort plus 50,000 from neighbors versus the town doing the 250, I, it's more efficient for us to do the 250.
Yeah.
It's too much work to get the extra 50, no?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I appreciate the offer, not trying to turn a gift horse in the mouth.
Okay. Um, I think we've got a direction to go on that. None of it's going to make that road a main thoroughfare. Are there liaison updates?
Oxymoron, Big Oak Beltwalk, off without a hitch. No one missed any other, other entities that used to be involved with it. Basketball is up and running, I think it's Oxymoron in good shape. Tomorrow, Oxymoron somehow reached out to the North Pole and Santa Claus will be calling a number of homes.
Would be used.
And, so I think it's, yeah, Oxymoron's in good shape.
Um, I assume that Brenda, that's muted and has got a new hand up?
Um, yes, thank you, Ann. Brenda Furlo, 19 Ocean Street. I understand that it would take some time to go forward and get this before the town meeting. Most of the problems exist in the winter time. I'm wondering if there's any temporary solution such as temporary jersey barriers or something else that could be installed to permit any kind of damage during this winter.
Thank you. I'm sure Chuck is still on and, and listening. And he will, I'm sure he's at least as interested in preventing damage to that road as anyone sitting in this room. Maybe not as much as those of you who, who live there, but we will certainly, he, he will certainly do whatever he can to keep this winter from blowing up the road again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, John?
Um, no fires at the DPW, COA, at least none more than usual. I will say the library has water problems, and we all know the rain that came down a couple of days ago. And that's, yeah, they had several inches in their basement and they also have some window issues and there have been emails. The DPW is certainly aware of that, but that may be, um, a budget issue sooner rather than later regarding. They've been, the water handling, I think they need a bigger sump pump or something because it's not keeping up with the water problem. So, other than that?
How's the Historic District Commission doing on the flagpole?
Uh, the Historic District Commission is okay. At the last meeting, that, that poll was voted fine. It was voted through. So that's all, that's all set.
Kathy?
Um, Mike and Pat, I'm not sure if I mentioned, they were engaging with Chief Fitzgerald, recommend both short and long-term changes to that crosswalk in front of Seaside One through that pedestrian accident. Downtown Improvement, at our meeting, we had a couple weeks ago, we talked about the wayfinding and, and Downtown Improvement is going to recommend to us some ways we can reduce the clutter and maybe reduce some signs that are out there. And I'm wondering what type of a target date we should give them? They asked about that. Is it something, just as long as it's done before the Culvert project? Do we feel we need it sooner? Are there any other? I mean, they look, I mean, they ask, it's always a good question. When you ask somebody to do something, you should give them a target date to.
April 15.
April, good, okay. I'll give them an April date, that sounds great. They also mentioned there was some, I guess, back and forth, some confusion about what's happening with the wayfinding signs. It's my understanding that the DPW representative on the team was trying to communicate with the designer to get the approved designs, the designs we approved in the proper digital format so that the sign company can do what they need to do. So I don't know if I saw the actual statement of work, but the statement of work that I saw said that the designer was going to produce the, the designs in a digital format. It did not specify a digital format. And so the sign company that our team is working with apparently needs, you know, a vector format. And the designer was looking for, okay, well, that, I, I think there was a miscommunication there, potentially looking for additional funds to get the designs in the proper format for the sign company. So Marlene is just going to clarify how much that would cost to get the designs in the format required by the sign company we, I guess, were using, according to the designer. You know, other sign companies produce this format on their own. So anyway, when you're requesting stuff in a digital format, the phrase "digital format" is not enough, but I, I'm sure that'll all get worked through. But once, once this is all worked through, I think the committee that we set up should not have to worry about this. So my question, Greg, is who owns the branding? Because we approve some branding here, right? And, and I guess people are still coming, coming to Marlene about trail signs and other things. The committee we set up did what we asked them to do and they should kind of be done with this. But DPW produces signs, they don't necessarily maintain the branding and stuff like that. So who in your organization is going to kind of take the, the lead on ensuring that new signs have the proper branding and all that stuff?
The new, new town sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be Tiffany.
Tiffany, okay. I don't know if she's been involved in this process at all, but I guess what I was communicating here is, we need to, that committee did its job, we need to let them go. Let's tie up the loose ends and make sure that we have clear roles and responsibilities who's going to take, not only take this to the finish line, but make sure it is properly maintained on an ongoing basis. Because I think other people are coming to the committee asking for help with their signs. And this committee's gone right now. Okay. Thank you, that was it.
I, I might add as a corollary to your comment about clutter. Initially, that the Historic Commission, about half these signs are in the Historic District, the other half are not. And with regard to the parking signs, which are at both entries at the back here, I know part of the branding is the posts. And we said, no new posts, whatever the park, current parking sign is on, you're just going to take that down and put the new one on with the appropriate motif in the same location. So there are no more posts than there are up there for that.
Right.
I don't really have, I missed the last planning board meeting because I had something else going on, so. Yeah, I don't really have any. Yeah, I don't really have any.
But yes, the planning board, they like to, feels that they're perfectly capable of dealing with ADUs and short-term rentals. And they've got eight other things, no, six other things that they want to work on between now and town meeting. So it's going to be interesting. So are those, what they're going to propose, are those intended to be in zoning bylaws? Or would they make a recommendation to the select board for us to include something in the general bylaws?
They would be both.
Might be both, okay. I can't read this, we, uh, budget presentation at the, at the school committee. They deliberately held everything level, including the amount of reserves that they put into the operating budget. And the answer came out. Don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but very, very large. So they're going, the school administration is going back to look. As I said, their health insurance is up by over $1 million. Even in a $33 million budget. Big, big number.
We've, Brandon, you seem to run into it every four or five years or so. You get a, balloons, and then, we didn't get it this year, but one thing they did, I was up there the other night, they did mention that chapter 70 looks like it's going to be lower than it was last year. They're talking under 2%, which is, insult the injury, but, uh, that's what they're planning for up there, so. I know you don't want to hear that. But, uh, yeah, that was talked about the other night up there.
Pretty much the extent of my information. We have a consent agenda, which is one. Is there anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? So Greg, I had noted to you some, I thought some errors in the November 18th minutes. So I would recommend pulling that out of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda, the exception of the November 18th? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. John?
Yes.
It says, yes, Kathy? Yes. Brian? Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, what are the corrections?
Um, the attendance list. It listed all of it. That was the special quick meeting we had before the town meeting.
Oh, yeah, it was one paragraph.
And the attendance list, not everybody was there. And I couldn't remember. I know that three of us were here.
The three of you were there.
I think we're not there.
I was out on the floor.
You are out on the floor.
I was out the floor whipping votes.
So I just think we need to make the attendance correction and the voting as well. Oh, oh. Lisa, please unmute yourself.
Hi, Lisa Bondo, 23 Woodholme Road. I just want to point one thing out regarding the presentation from the Long Jemity Bench Project. The location on Summer Street, it was reviewed Friday by Digsafe. And the location, it requires that our bench move three feet closer to the green box. Because of a, I'm trying to find my note.
Some wires, some utility wires in the ground.
Yes, uh, yes. Specifically, a water, a water feed that came in. The, my excavator feels you can easily work around the, um, the orange flag. So I don't know if you were able to get that additional page, but the communication and TV lines are not an issue at all. But I just wanted to clarify that we do have to move it a little closer than the, my diagram shows.
Thank you. I'm wondering, maybe we can just do a consensus that we are willing to approve a bench that's within 10 feet of
where it's supposed to be.
Where it's supposed to be.
Uh, and we're going to.
Yeah.
It still looks like it's the same place.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty material. It's a diminutive chess.
The utilities, yeah.
Plus all sorts of problems, I think.
You're, you're fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a motion? Do we have a motion to approve the?
I moved it.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian? Kathy? Hannah says yes.
Sean, yes.
And we have a meeting.
Yeah, really. What I've written there is sufficient, I don't really need to elaborate. If you have a specific question, just underscore that we do have our staff gathering on Wednesday. Works in your schedule to attend. Welcome your presence.
Good presence.
Good holiday. So, yeah. I'll give you some judicial updates next time.
Or on Wednesday.
Yeah. I don't see many between now and January. I hope you have a wonderful holiday season.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Happy Kwanzaa, Merry Hanukkah, Boxing Day.
Dancing around the oak trees, painting blue.
Festive. I think I've covered everything.
Kwanzaa?
I just had a sick one.
There you go.
Has it covered?
Maybe that's past, I don't know.
A Kwanzaa is like, isn't Kwanzaa like the week between?
Yeah.
Oh, is that right?
Boxing Day starts it.
Boxing's already that.
Motion, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Do we have anything to sign, Deb?
Yes, you do. We have a lot of signatures.
I've been practicing.